Have your attention, let's bow our heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you very much, and we'll officially call this regular meeting of the town of Holton Beach to order. Welcome all of you, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of fun and learn a whole lot tonight, so thanks again for being here, and let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag to my right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any new faces in here, so we can skip all the talk about the flag. Got out number four on the agenda, instead of approval of the agenda, and then a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that item twenty, possible acquisition of Lot Nine of Sierra Estates be removed from the agenda.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an agenda item this evening to the agenda, the discussion of possible action to amend the rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we've got two items, there's a motion, and that motion will be to address one of the changes or both of the changes, or none of the changes.
We're gonna make one motion to delete number twenty and add, if you'd like.
Whatever you want, you're making the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, favor say aye?
Aye.
We have some discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the movement gets no opportunity to speak first, am I right?
That's correct. Okay, well, let's do this.
The second.
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so first motion is withdrawn, the second actor there is agreeing to it, so let's start again, do them all at once.
Making a motion to remove agenda item number twenty?
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, number twenty is gone, and now, is there another motion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add to the agenda to, I don't know whether to submit a motion or whether I add to the agenda for this evening, for possible action and to amend the rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners.
Would you like to make that number twenty on the agenda?
At this time.
Okay, everybody understand the motion, we got rid of number twenty and then the and then the motion is to replace it with this.
One second.
More discussion?
Yes. Again, I give the movement an opportunity to state its reasons for wanting to amend.
I'll do, I'll state it. I'm recommending that the second sentence contained in Rule Number Thirteen, and that's classified as Agenda on page five of the Rules of Procedure be revised. To be consistent at both regular and special meetings, I'd like for the current word.
Hold a minute. The motion is to put on the agenda, the discussion of the matter would follow only here, the agenda is present.
Okay, I'll wait till item number twenty.
So then, I object to this being placed on the agenda, and I object to it despite the fact that I am very much in favor of public comment, and I've always had asked for public comment. This is just another example of not having an agenda item placed on the agenda when it's supposed to be placed. We had, we had a meeting, last meeting, and we had a special meeting, which I'm assuming is what caused this to become an issue, because at that special meeting, there was an objection to allowing people to have public comment. So although I am firmly in favor of public comment, any agenda item, I've been consistent since I've been made a member of the Board, that any agenda item that isn't on the agenda, we should not consider if we're giving it at the last moment, and we were not given this document, I was, I was handed one at our earlier meeting today, so I don't believe the other members of the Board of Commissioners are. The public, obviously, has no idea what this issue is, and the whole idea of having an agenda for certain public, as well as the Board of Commissioners, to be aware of the issues, having the opportunity to study those issues, have an opportunity to make public comment on those issues, whether it's an issue I'm in favor of or an issue I'm opposed to, it shouldn't be on the agenda unless it's been put on the agenda in a proper way. And that's my objection to having this go on tonight.
And I, I'd just like to add, because, I mean, I did revise the rules of procedure, although it does seem simple, you know, to just do an amendment, and it can be, I would prefer that everybody have what is proposed ahead of the meeting, because the document does have places where you refer back and forth or you look for consistencies. So I think to have the discussion and make a decision, everybody needs to have the information ahead of time to actually have the whole document, rules, procedure in front of them, so that they can look at the change and how it affects the section and if there are other sections. So, again, it's not an objection to amending the rules of procedure, because we can do that anytime, but I think it should be done appropriately, and as Mike says, put it on the agenda, have the information, give it out ahead of time, so everybody can before the meeting, look at the rules of procedure, see what the change is, and come with that yea or nay, it looks good or it doesn't look good. That's a big document, it's kinda hard to just whip it into where it belongs.
My turn?
Yes.
It's a discussion of possible action, so we don't have to take action if we don't feel comfortable doing it. And we are a little bit flexible, have been for a while, because if you want to go too technical, Item Fifteen and Nineteen have no backup, so there's no way of knowing what is really meant by those two agenda items, for me or the public. So, and, and I added backup for Item Seventeen, which I always know. So, I think a little flexibility is not a bad thing.
And I agree, but, but I would also say that, as the Secretary, you could have rejected those items and kept them off the agenda if you thought that they didn't have enough documentation. And secondly, what I would say is, from the very first meeting that I sat on this board, there was a last-minute change in the agenda that was a important issue, and that, I would say, at least two-thirds of the meetings that we've held, there have been last-minute additions to the agenda. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a regular way of doing business. So if you feel, as the Secretary, that there's not enough documentation, don't put it on the agenda, but don't put something on the agenda at the last minute. Those are two different issues, two, two very different issues.
So, two-thirds, I would definitely argue with that statement, and I just told you, if you please listen, that I am being flexible, and I think that that should be a part of how we do business.
I will add that sometimes an agenda item, the intent is so clear by the sentence it's given, that writing two sentences as a backup document actually doesn't add anything.
I, I would add, as the Mayor, I would appreciate being made aware of this before I sat in the chair for a meeting or two. Anyway, discussion's ended, and it's time to-
I just have one comment. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this real simple, for everybody to understand. I'm gonna withdraw it. I thought, because of the simplicity associated with this, and because of the issue that I felt occurred at the last meeting, that it was important enough to me to get it on the table, and, but if it's not deemed as being simplistic, I am concerned about consistency, I am concerned about the verbiage, that the people that are attending this meeting, and if it was me sitting in the audience, I would wanna be heard, and I just wanna make sure that we take care of it going forward. That's my point. But I'll carry this over until a December meeting, thank you.
Well, wait, we will continue this subject right now, because the issue, when we talk about public comment, this goes back to the last special meeting we had, where we had a meeting where we had our environmental attorney come here and give a presentation. After that presentation was finished, not one person on this board asked him a question. Not one person asked him what we should do. Not one person inquired into where we should go and what was better for this town. But, four days later, I get a notice that we're having a special meeting, and we're gonna, we're gonna sue the island that's, that's east of us. So, and wait, let me finish, and then, here's what we're doing, and at that meeting, because it was a special meeting, I moved that we have public comment, so people could comment on whether or not this was a good idea, and you voted no, as a group. Three people said no, so therefore, there was no public comment.
Isn't there than three?
There was you amongst me and three.
Yeah, I did, because I was trying to be consistent with vast practices.
There's nothing, there's nothing in our rules that say you can't have public comment during a special meeting. There's nothing there, I love it. So I, I don't understand this. So now, what, what, I agree, there should always be public comment, I wanted public comment, but there also is a process, and we should follow that process, and we shouldn't just change it to make something easy. I think what, what we're seeing here is, you realize that we shouldn't have allowed the public comment without any type of negative vote.
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I shouldn't pull words in and out.
Thank you.
But we should have had public comment, especially since in that audience, we had a county representative, we had a state representative, we had the Mayor, Promotion Isle and their staff, and I was told one of the reasons we wouldn't do that is because we already knew what they were gonna say, and we didn't need to hear that. I think that when somebody is going to speak against my position, that's what I wanna hear. I don't need somebody who supports my position to speak, but somebody who is against my position may, may actually have a good idea, they may actually be right. But I'll never know that if I don't allow them to speak, and we should always allow. So don't, don't try to paint this as, I don't want people to have the right to speak at these meetings. I want them to speak always. I'm the one who made the motion for them to speak, that motion was turned down. So, I want them to speak, they can come up and speak tonight, they can speak as long as they want, but the process should be followed.
Well, they, they, I'm finishing. They can't speak as long as they want, we have rules, and we have to follow the rules. The rules are three minutes. So, we also have a special meeting, we have rules for a special meeting, we follow those rules, there were communications before that from the attorney that we're, that you're referencing, that sent to all the Commissioners, including the Mayor, two notes to explain what was going on. What else? You're going back to the, the other meeting before the special meeting, where it's our prerogative, if we didn't wanna ask questions, we didn't ask questions. I don't know why you're-
Well, I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why.
I'm not, I'm not done.
Okay, are we be finished?
So, that's, that's my, my right, so you, you're criticizing me for not asking a question of, of something that I, I understood the issue. And my understanding of the rules, and I may be wrong, but our rules that we didn't have to have a, a, a comment section in a special meeting. So if you wanted to suspend those rules, that's what Mr. Fletcher did halfway through the meeting, and we agreed to that.
Okay, are you finishing?
Yes.
We'll go back to the first point. You, at the special meeting, when we objected to, to vote on, said we had the opportunity to speak because Mr. Wright was at, was at the meeting. We, we brought up the point that you failed to take the opportunity to question that. You pointed out the fact that we had the opportunity. But, but you see, as you said, I understood the issue, I saw no sense in moving with that meet this brief, so it was clear to me that it shouldn't go, so why would I ask them a question? Number two is, I don't believe that there is anything in the rules that prohibit, you know, the, our comments during the special meeting. So I don't really see where we were relying on something, I, I mean, it just, it just doesn't make sense. We should have comments always, anytime somebody wants to do it. We do have rules, we have, we have a sign-up sheet, we have this, we have that, but none of the rules apply if you don't even allow people to handle public comment, period.
Sorry if you don't know what's on the agenda. I'll make one last comment.
Sure.
Cut this. You cannot add an agenda item to a special meeting, unless it's an absolute emergency.
I don't believe-
And we try to do that. We can, although, we can say, may we waive the rules of procedure to allow something to happen? That's what I did, and that would have worked, and I didn't vote, because we're not allowed to, to change the agenda.
Ah.
Which is-
It's adding an agenda item.
You're adding an agenda item.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can move now.
After all that, I think Mike and I probably agree, but around that way, I just try and go and figure it out. I'd either wait till December, or I could withdraw. Or withdraw, and I'll put it in the December agenda.
Perfect. Okay, so we have no number twenty, right?
No.
Okay, otherwise, the agenda stays the same? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You got that matter first?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Are we ready to move ahead? And consider, um, did we actually vote on the-
We had to live on the minutes here, sir.
No, on the, on the agenda, did we actually vote on the full agenda? I don't think we did.
No, just during our session.
Alright, so Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with number twenty removed, and everything else stays the same.
So move.
Oh, in favor say aye?
Aye.
Now, let's look to number five, and you wanna do an A, B, C motion, or what's your pleasure?
I'm fine, I'm getting the three.
Alright, Chair recognizes John Fletcher, motion of approving five, A, B, and C. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All in favor say no. Number six, public comments on agenda items. My list has no names, so we will move to number seven, annual beach monitoring report. Mr. Franway, show us the way.
Hi, my name's Franway, I'm a close邻here with the Flat Technology Management, we've been working for the town of Holton Beach for about fifteen years now, working on their beach management activities. Every year, they're doing annual monitoring analysis, and we look at volume change, shoreline change. You can see right here with all the, the tranxex we do, we do forty-eight tranxex along the entire beach from Inlet to Inlet, and we actually do a few tranxex over on Oak Island. That's just because of the, the downdrift, basically, sand, net sand transport is from Oak to Holton Beach to Ocean Isle, in, in general, in a regional sense. This has been occurring since two thousand and one, annually, this annual monitoring, and the primary reason isn't for, for planning for nourishments, upcoming events, and seeing how previous nourishments have done, and as well as FEMA eligibility. We have a, the town of Holton Beach has a quote-unquote engineered beach according to FEMA, and when Hurricane Florence or Michael comes through, and you have that beach, they, FEMA realizes the importance of beach nourishment in that it is protecting more valuable infrastructure and even lives. And so they do agree that, you know, coming out there, being proactive, and having a good, strong beach system actually does, it's preventative, that, that really works out in the long run. Point it to the, over there, right?
Is it on? I think I turned it back off before I, you know.
There. Okay, so our annual monitoring is about, it's, it's from pretty much about July to July, and that's our, our survey, the town survey usually occurs in the spring, and we collect all that data, and then we process it, and we, you know, do the report, and so this is actually talking about the two thousand and seventeen hurricane season. Obviously, Florence and Michael are, were much worse than anything we had in two thousand and seventeen here. You see, you know, obviously, there was Irma, and Jose, and Maria, but nothing really happened too much around Holton Beach. Holton Beach, that was a pretty good year for hurricane seasons for, for this area. So, it was, it was a favorable year prior to Florence and Michael. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the whole beach, Central Reach nourishment, that was done about a year and a half ago, and so this was our first kind of beach, our nourishment, where we could see what the, how the sand moved over, you know, over a year after it was built. And so that's just some images of the Central Reach project that happened in two thousand and seventeen. And this is kind of our volume analysis, we do volume analysis two ways, we do it to kind of the active beaches, it's down to the, the five-foot contour, so it's basically the upper beach in the surf zone, and then we come out here to the twelve-foot depth contour, and we do the volume from the top of the dune to the twelve-foot depth. The one interesting thing that happened this year, or this survey, was that Hurricane Matthew, usually, we don't see anything, a lot, we don't see a lot of sand moving deeper than twelve feet. But all of a sudden, with Hurricane Matthew, we did see material movement. This is, you know, that, over the last fifteen years, we really haven't seen any kind of movement beyond that twelve-foot contour, except for Matthew. And so, that, that'll come up here in a second. When we did our volume analysis, this is volume change after that twelve-foot contour, we actually found that the beach gained about four hundred and forty thousand cubic yards without even doing a nourishment, which is pretty crazy. So, usually, the, the beach will not gain sand like that unless you're active, you put a sand on there. So, we had to go back, and we, we looked, and it was actually that material that got moved offshore beyond twelve feet for Matthew is actually kind of working its way back onto the beach. So instead of just the nourishment project, now we, we do have this movement from beyond the twelve-foot contour into the, you know, closer than that. So that's good, that's showing some recovery. We'll see the post, we did do some weighting depth surveys for post Florence and post Michael, but we didn't get out, you need, obviously, you need a boat to get out there and survey that, so we really won't know what's going out there, what's going on out there until this next coming up spring. But, you can see that from the accretion, this is all accretion right here, so basically, the entire beach pretty much accreted over this last year, which is, you know, really good and a little surprising. There was erosion on the east end, and actually, there was a little bit of erosion on the west end as well. The west end has been pretty stable, and we do think that the sand, and we have seen the sand from the Central Reach nourishment is moving west, and it's going to continue to benefit that western shoreline. But, you know, we're keeping an eye on it, and this is, so that was volume, and now this is mean-high water. And the way the, the beach gets built, it's kind of artificial, where they build a big berm, and then we come and just let nature take its course and reshape the beach the way it wants to. And so they, well, I see this, this is down here, this is mean-high water erosion, and then this is mean-high water accretion. And you can see, this is on the entire, pretty much the Central Reach project, when they build that big artificial beach berm, we know that it's going to quote-unquote equilibrate, and the volume's still there, as we saw before, but the mean-high water line changed, you know, significantly, it moved, you know, fifty to sixty feet. And then, again, here, we, we're still seeing some erosion here on the west end, so we saw volume metric erosion, shoreline erosion over the west end, and, and post Michael and, and post Florence, the west end. It's still a really nice, pretty dune system, that's, you know, about four hundred, five hundred feet wide. But we're gonna look at it, and then one idea that we had was to, basically, the dune vegetation, usually, the dune vegetation program is mostly sea oats, bitter panicum, it's kind of the sea grasses, the beach grasses. We can look into maybe going into like secondary, tertiary dune systems, where you're getting that scrub shrub vegetation, and we could talk with maybe Steve Mercer and that C, if he's got any ideas, where we can kind of get that, get that white dune system just a little more beefy, you know, a little more landward of, of where the beach grasses And so this is the two thousand, two thousand and seventeen, and just basically assuming normal background erosion versus what the town's been doing, the town and all their nourishments. And basically, this is where the shoreline is, and this is just mean-high water. The shoreline is pretty much two hundred, almost two hundred feet wider than it was back in two thousand. And then even if you compare it to background erosion, it seems it's even wider than that. So basically, all this blue right here is basically saying that the, the town has really done a good job, and their beach management activities have been very successful, where we're, they're, they're not only keeping up with erosion, but you're kind of getting ahead of it in both spots. And then what you do see over here in the west end again, is there's something we're gonna start looking at here, the last, you know, five years or so, we, we have seen more erosion on the west end than normal, where that, the west end is usually just stable to accretional, you don't really have to worry about it as much. So we're still gonna keep an eye on that. For the, for the next coming up year, we, I've talked with the Commissioners and David and Christie about this before, there's, there's some pressure from other communities, Oak Island is looking to, this is the Lauterqal Inlet, this is Lauterqal Inlet crossing, the sand has traditionally gone to the east end every other year, but Oak Island is actually getting that sand this year, this winter, and that's, that's, that's difficult, because that sand, we, the east end really relies on that sand source, and so we're just gonna continue, I'll continue to work with the town and try to figure something out here. Then out here, this is the coal regs line, this is, that's the collision regulation line that the Coast Guard uses. Beyond this line, you need a, a ocean-certified dredge, which is kind of hard to, they're expensive. And this is where it runs into County, is, is looking to try to deepen, widen, and possibly deepen this, to get material to put on the beach. And actually, I've called, we've called out some of the historical shipwrecks right here. It's, it's gonna be difficult, especially because of these historical shipwrecks, to really kind of do any sort of beach nourishment project, where you're borrowing material from here and putting it somewhere else. But, obviously, that's, that's something the County's interested in, so we're gonna continue to coordinate with them on that, and- coordinate with them on that, and, because that's obviously really important, because if something did happen, it would probably be the east end that would get detrimentally impacted. And then the Florence and Michael mitigation, FEMA mitigation, that's just ongoing at the moment. And then sometime in the near future, not maybe this year, or maybe next year, central reach additional offshore bar area investigations should probably occur. So we have, you know, a little bit more. Right now, there's about 500,000 cubic yards of material out there, but Oak Island, again, is interested in that bar area. So, at some point here in the near future, another investigation for offshore material should occur. And I think that's it.
Excuse me, Grant.
Yes.
So is this what you just, this, you know, ongoing, is this in the document or not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I have another, I looked at the 2-35, your 2.9, about the Colonel Brian.
Okay, okay.
So, I'd like to see, I expected a more detailed, more robust description of a lot of, you know, the years of activity.
Okay.
There's, you know, four paragraphs.
Okay.
So, you know, like that, you know, we had the resolution in 1902, a couple meetings in April that have a lot of information. So I'd like to, I expected that to be a lot more robust.
Okay.
More detailed than that.
Detailed than just the, the kind of process and the procedures where?
Yeah, and some of the, you know, information we had, you know.
Well, I didn't agree to some of that information in that resolution, but...
Some of the engineering, no, there's some comments from coastal division management. So...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I get it.
But you can reference that, you know.
Yes, okay.
And it also states that, you know, paragraph three, you, I don't know if you can make the statement that, you know, this program will no longer, you know, time intervals between nourishment, a lot more stable beach and dune system. I mean, it was an experimental program, I don't think it's gonna define that.
The modeling and analysis did show that? So, yeah.
Okay, so the modeling and analysis. So modeling and analysis, and then relying on that.
Sure, okay.
That modeling, so.
Well, and the analysis, yes, engineering analysis.
So, I would even...
I can revise that.
Encourage you to look at, you know, a resolution, and there was April 6th and April 17th, there was a lot of information.
I, yes, I did. I did, and there were just some things that I personally didn't agree with from an engineering standpoint in that resolution.
Grant?
Yes.
And just as a turtle writer, if you will, I write once or twice a week during the turtle season. This last year, they dredged Shalote Inlet, it's a major dredging. My linkage, my thought was, what happened after that is all of a sudden we got severe erosion on the west end. People had just put walkways out, and all of a sudden, the sand was 20 feet, 30 feet under them, and I could no longer at high tide go around the east, west end of the island by getting around at high tide. Am I wrong? Is there a linkage between that dredging and what that sand did on our beach?
There can be. And it was back in, about 2001, when they took way too much material out of Shalote Inlet, which was about 1.8 million cubic yards, I think, I believe. And, and there was some obvious effects on Holton Beach's west end. Since then, they've stepped that down about 600,000 cubic yards, but depending on where they put that, they can place that, you know, too close to the Holton Beach shoreline where the material's just gonna slump right back into that bar area. We can look into that a little bit more. And, and yes, whenever there's some sort of dredging activity at Shalote, you know, we keep an eye on it.
And are you linked to this, the question, the county of widening significantly the Shalote Inlet and deepening it, I mean, the La Plaule Inlet? Deepening it and widening it, might that well have the same severe effect of hydro Oak Island or our island? Depending on the angle of that channel?
Yes, that, they are proposing only about 250,000 cubic yards of material. So it is, it's much smaller than the Shalote dredging project, but, but yes, it's a very, it's almost, and I was saying, it's almost like a payday system where that material is kind of gonna get naturally, it's going to move, it's gonna, that shoals are going to move naturally from Oak, make it around La Plaule Inlet, and attach on the east end. And when you start, you know, moving that material artificially, then that hole out there that you created has to fill in before that natural system continues to work that way. So, yeah, it's a, it's a dangerous balancing act. But then obviously, from a navigation point of view, it's much easier to navigate, and the county, so even that, where, you know, unfortunately, navigation and, and, you know, healthy beach, sometimes they can coexist peacefully, but other times, they're, they're, you know, kind of opposite.
Conflicting.
Yes, they're conflicting, yeah.
So, Grant, so based on the, based on the east end, east end of the island, looks like we lost about 140,000 cubic yards so far.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any suggestions, you mentioned the 500,000 cubic yard material. Are there any suggestions, anything that you can offer to us that might be a ray of light or help pertaining to taking that material or Holton Beach receiving that material? Without getting into a contest with our neighbors?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's gonna be difficult. Yeah, it's, I'm not sure. We believe, you know, it really does appear that, you know, especially in Oak Island, when they, when they're talking, they need, they're talking about needing 15 million cubic yards of material.
Hold on.
Three mil, yes. A small fraction, this is a small fraction of what they really need. It would be like almost a town saying, well, we need to do the central reach project, so we're just gonna take it all from them. It's just impossible. So they're just treating little hotspots, and they've got sandbags out in some of these areas. You know, we really, I think we, the town really had a good little kind of project for a small section of shoreline that needed it, and I thought it was really just perfectly suited, especially when the town started using the piggyback and using this band widener to, you know, put maybe about 140,000 cubic yards of material. So it's, it's, yeah, it's really tough. And then even, you know, the central reach project, the town, you know, worked really hard to get that material. A lot of people said there was, you know, no material offshore, it's a sand star offshore. The town found a really nice sand source, and, and now that's kind of in jeopardy. The, you know, J Bird Shoals is, you know, over, you know, on the other side of Oak Island, but there's a whole lot of material there, and I, you know, I know Bald Head is just trying, is going to use the J Bird Shoals this, this winter.
Is that beach quality?
Yes. And so, you know, obviously, we're, you know, town's always trying to piggyback when we know that other dredges are around. Even a bar area like that is, somehow you could almost piggyback off that project to really kind of save some costs. Working with, you know, David and Christie and the boards, you know, we'll just kind of really just keep working hard and making sure that we've got, you know, all our sand sources lined up.
Yeah, that, it was interesting. So in March of 2017, that's when we did what some people call the eastern reach, we had 120,000 cubic yards.
Yes.
And what we just lost was 88,000. So 120, 100, and we lost 140, so it was really close to...
Yes.
To replenishing that entire beach.
Yeah, yeah, it's, right now, you know, basically that, that project is every two years, and we're, yeah, it can't go, you know, we don't think it can go four years. Even with some of that central reach project is spreading that way, and it's, it's, it's that good sand, and it will, central reach project is going to benefit, the spreading benefits both sides of the project, will benefit from it, but, you know, obviously we got a Florence and a Michael, that's really already trying to stress that project a little bit. But, you know, it did hold up well, but, you know, it's never, you know, we're not getting many summers off, and even though winters can be pretty energetic.
Are we doing, are we doing extra monitoring on the east end? Did we just do some, you know? Are we doing extra monitoring?
Yes, yes, we're gonna do some extra data. Yes.
A lot of data in this report. I would, I would do all the things. It's really good.
Well, that'd be nice.
Thank you.
Sure, and, and, you know, we, I can issue a revision here, add some more, more stuff in there, but not a big deal. So, okay.
Thanks. Yeah, so part of the, part of the inlet and beach protection board is to give us a report. I've read the report, if anybody has any questions, we can, we can ask them, but I'm okay with accepting that report.
Chief Wadley?
Again, I will say, don't get used to me being distant, but it's there, but tonight was kind of a special occasion in that my longest-serving officer retired after 30 years of service, Mike Hamilton, and we had a little get-together for him, and sent him off with his file on his back. That being said, we're ready to hire his replacement. Not that it'll be a replacement, but it'll be a body taking up the space that he once occupied. We have somebody in mind, and that paperwork is actually already going to the state, the state claims that now, rather than the previous two months it would take to hire somebody, that they have a 10-day turnaround on that. So, 10 days from now, we will see if that's true or not. My money is on the fact that it's probably gonna take a little longer than that, but sometime by the middle of December, hopefully, we'll have another officer onboard, and I think, although he's not Mike Hamilton, I think he'll still be an asset for the department and the town. He's a local fellow, been working for the Sheriff's Department for about five years, has lived in Bonham Town his whole life, so very familiar with the beach and the island and that sort of thing, and really wanted to come to work here, so we'll be looking forward to getting him onboard. Other than that, hope you guys have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I'm glad to answer any questions. We are not experiencing any major pruneways at the moment, and hope that will continue through the winter, but that remains to be seen also.
Any questions, the chief? Thank you for all your staff. We're on number 10, Mr. Leo Green. The board's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board. We've passed out a status report on the project that has, that shows the status of the date. Total contract price for P L O N E, this does not include the back pump station that was purchased directly by the town and dune delivery, and it's actually, you know, getting put in place, it hasn't been connected up, but it has been set in the building that is complete to date. P L O N E's total contract price, it is a million, $205,000. Complete to date is, this is about the end of, my paper press has been approved, the total amount, the total amount of 327,000 dollars, which represents at the end of last month, about 37,000 completed on Love and's contract.
Mr. Green, if you're fully buying that and speaking today, thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. The notice to fatigue, proceed on Love and's contract, the issue of July 9th, the substantial completion date is, or is, January 5th, and the final payment February, February 6th. Present time, he's projecting the completion date of January 19th, so he's running, he's running 20 or so days behind his projected schedule. There may be some just petition for a few days after Hurricane and weather, but we believe I guess that we're gonna be in good shape to follow it, to complete the project within the slow season down here, and have a process that's very good, we're not gonna have to be strange, right? I think some of the latest we're experiencing is following the materials to the sub contract that's actually doing the building, we're having to get it, the middle, committed to a foreword. We're very close, we're covering all of that. Workmanship is acceptable, is good, and we're, we're satisfied with the progress.
Any questions?
Commissions, is there any questions?
I guess I do. So, are we still on schedule? I guess the January 25th is the last, the completion date? Don't you have that? You move the solution?
It's just, yeah, it did, it actually, it's the completion date, I think. It's gonna be mobilized as soon as we're, as soon as possible.
So, so you're, you know, a couple things have, plus you started to have, but you feel comfortable right now, didn't you? And we're still on budget, including, you know, understanding that.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be some minor changes. Right now, we're, we're looking at maybe four, five changes, there's some presence, there's some, there's some additional calls, but nothing, nothing major.
So, why do we anticipate finding a possible date on everything that's been done?
Of this contract? Right now, I can't anticipate anything over a million, two, 10, maybe, two, 15.
And you recall what the original estimate?
I don't have all that information. I know the town purchased the, David, you have that number, the town paid for that pump station. The town bought that pump station, do you have?
I don't, but we did, but I don't have it. And Chris, do you remember what that was?
Pump station equipment was about 170-some thousand dollars, about 170,000, 170,000, and all of a sudden we had that backup skin for emergency purposes, which was about additional 15 tons, so it was a little less than $200,000. which was about additional fifteen tons, so it was a little less than two-hundred thousand dollars.
Those were programmed and budgeted expenses.
I guess my question was, what would be provisional contract price?
One-two-zero-five.
One-two-zero-five?
I believe that's what we had said, yes.
One-two-zero-five, L O N S provisional contract. That includes, that includes guaranteed everything down there.
Any more questions? Mr. Evans, I have a question. Do you have anything to add, or are you satisfied with inspections and?
Everything, I, well, look, the inspections is totally different than the stuff you are discussing up here. It's literally a conflict of interest for me to be involved in any kind of design systems, talks about contracts, numbers, and dollars, because I'm cutting out a state function at the local level. It's a conflict of interest for me to be involved. But as far as the, the, the job itself, the work that we have down there, everything that they've called in, we have inspected, and, uh, they have, uh, they have actually fixed or repaired or worked with us to take out any deficiencies, and the work, the work that we have down there is, is fantastic as far as that goes. Uh, like you said earlier, we're having some problems with, uh, some prior approvals on some changes and that kind of stuff, but that's not changes to the system, and that doesn't affect anything as far as operation. It's just an administrative portion of the law that needs to be followed so that we have an accurate documentation of what we're doing. But they're doing a great job. Uh, the engineers doing a good job, um, it's just that it's hard and difficult when you come into Tim Evans' town to try to get things done, because I followed the book to the T. You know what I mean? And so sometimes it's like a little shock, so.
And, and I'd like to point out that he has been a big help to us. Uh, Chris, certainly, the staff, all the staff has been a great help to us. We're having a monthly progress meeting that we discuss, uh, issues, uh, and I think we're, we're together on, on, on the job that he's...
Any other questions or comments?
No, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fletcher, number eleven.
Do you want to even make a motion before we discuss it all? Or can we discuss it?
I don't know why I need to contemplate, but the floor is yours, stake whatever you want. You can do it, make a motion.
In, in the, uh, material that was passed out, the head of time, I looked at the board, there was a charter, a revision of the charter for the audit committee, and also a set of bylaws that the audit committee had, uh, passed. That charter, uh, was approved by the audit committee, but then it has to come to the board for its approval. That charter was based on the, uh, charter that's used at Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville, which had been recommended by our town attorney. And as it was drafted for the audit committee, the town attorney reviewed it, came up with a final draft. The chief executive of the Government Finance Office Association reviewed that, uh, when the attorney did pass it. The one, the auditor doing the review now, Internal Control reviewed it, said it's fine. What you have in front of us now, the attorney today provided a last-minute update for this, and it is simply for the charter, only in addition of the first line, the only difference in the first line, that the audit committee serves as an advisory board for the town's board of commissioners. The rest of the charter material stays the same. Am I correct?
Um, I do not agree with your presentation of the events as they unfolded specifically. What you have in front of you is what I supplied to you to provide to the, the audit committee, so...
And I do.
And, and I'm assuming that's also what the other entities approved. What's in the packet is not what I sent to the audit committee.
That's what the audit committee sent back. They changed, they requested change. So we're back to what the attorney gave us originally. And the audit, uh, committee asked to make some additional bylaws, but the attorney has suggested we pull those out and go with what we have in this, this packet here, and she will work with the audit committee to make sure that we haven't violated any of the open meeting laws as we put the bylaws together. So I would move that the board approved this amendment to ordinance thirty-dash-twenty-six, the audit committee, in the form that was given to us today by the, uh, town attorney.
I second.
Motion second, floor is open for discussion.
Um, I just have one question, um, about the terminology on number six and seven, where the audit committee shall ensure internal control systems are in place, uh, implements audit. Is, is it more appropriate to say you confirm? Because these will be things that are happening by recommendations from, from an auditor or something, and as the advisory committee, isn't it for you to confirm, and if there is an issue, to then bring it back to the board for the board to decide what additional actions taken? So ensure is a, a sort of a, a different way. It confirmed to me seems more in line with what I believe the audit committee's responsibilities are. It, it's a suggestion.
I'm attorney.
I have no objection to that terminology.
I have no objection to that. Please, the word ensure in six and seven to confirm.
Ultimately, the board is the entity that is responsible for ensuring that the financial affairs of the town are being operated.
The audit committee takes no actions other than checking an auditor or something like that.
That's right.
And provide any recommendations.
I have a, a question about the, the appointment of terms. With all of the other advisory boards and committees we have in town, the whole list of people who wish to serve on that board, uh, is submitted to the board to, to look at and to determine who would be on there. And, uh, for the audit committee, that, that's left for the chairman to cull the list and to then select whomever the chairman thinks is qualified. And I would just move that, uh, I would prefer if we selected the members of the audit committee the same way we select the members of the other committees, that I think the members of the board of commissioners are qualified to look at the resumes of the applicants and determine whether or not they're qualified to serve on.
Actually, the chairman doesn't pick it. The audit committee in full reviews every proposal that someone wants to serve, evaluates them, and three of those members are highly qualified accountants and auditors themselves. Two are people who've ran companies on their own, so the board felt when we put this together that it was, they were quite, more qualified than the overall board is to select which, which are the proper auditors to have on the committee.
Well, the, the document says the public member shall be appointed by the chairman.
They are, but it's only based after a complete review and agreement by the audit committee.
I think it's subject to the board of commissioners, but...
And subject to this in the end.
If, if I may ask, does the audit committee have a meeting between now and the, I mean, is there a need for us to adopt this charter amendment tonight? Or can we take the feedback of the board, um, and provide a revised version since there was a, um, mix-up with the item that was in the agenda packet, and provide a document that encompasses all of the concerns that are being stated today?
There is no scheduled audit committee meeting. One could be called at the pleasure of the committee.
Sure.
I guess, and the chair.
I can call it. As long as you're available, I can call a meeting.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not certain that I need to attend that meeting. I think that getting the, this board's, uh, input on, just as, as being done right now, and then, um, supplying the audit committee with, uh, recommended version of the charter and bylaws that the board would, might reverse the roles. That'd get a little bit easier than having the audit committee do all the work to try to draft something and have it come back to the board, and then the board get feedback on it. It's an efficiency thing for me, but I'm happy to do it whichever way the board would like to.
Can you do it before the next?
Could we, could we approve just the charter? And the bylaws to be later?
There's no ordinance number assigned to this, and it's not in the format, so you're just directing me to do it anyways, correct? So, I mean, in between the time, we should be able to do that. Because we can't change the ordinance today without the correct format anyways. We don't have it.
I think that's a procedural aspect, but either way, the board would like to proceed. I'm happy to do this.
Madam Attorney, I'm trying to figure how to say this so it comes out right. The way I understand how it definitely works, the commissioners are responsible for all of these committees and the members of all those committees. It makes me nervous of any kind of implication that a committee is selecting their own members when the liability falls back on the commissioners.
Well, that really, we, we propose to the board, the board approves, and the board will see everybody's, everybody's bio.
But, but my point is that, for argument's sake, the way it is now, ten people could say, could express their interest, they'll, they'll give you...
They'll give you too. They come here.
But they don't come here until such time as you nominate them?
No. They come here first. You see them, and the audit committee reviews those.
I think it's the language that's called it, it's hard.
Then how does the public member shall be appointed by the chairman? Where does, where does that even come in? That, that should be out.
They, they go back, all those go back to the audit committee, and they assess from all those nominees that brought themselves forward. And everybody tells them, makes a presentation to the board. That goes to the audit committee, which looks at all their credentials and all the experience and says, "We nominate, well, they tell me nominate this to the board, and that's your choice." Yes or no?
But you see here, now, now, just to go back to what I said, if ten people apply, they're gonna go to you and, and the board, the advisory board, and you're gonna say, "Here's the two guys I think are best qualified."
Correct.
What I'm saying, and I think what the mayor's trying to say is, you shouldn't do that. We should look at all ten people and determine whether or not they're qualified.
To be on the audit committee?
Yes.
So you'll know what, you'll know what should, but you know what's required to be on the audit committee.
Well, that's why you're here, right? You're an expert.
I'm your board.
Yes, but if you don't, if I have a question, or if I don't know, or you could tell us, here's the thing that we should be looking at. Right? We're not, I, I don't think any of us profess to be experts in all areas of government, but we sit up here and make decisions all the time. So I think we can look and see if somebody's qualified, at, at a fundamental level.
So you're not want, you have five members in the audit committee that are qualified, the audit committee members. You don't want their recommendation as to who these new people should be?
No.
What's, what's best practice? I mean, let's go back to Fayetteville, and is this the best practice?
Fayetteville's different, because I believe that Fayetteville's, and I sent y'all several different versions of charters, but in that situation, you've got outside, uh, professionals serving on the audit committee. You may have, I think, more than one commissioner serving on the audit committee. So it's not apples to apples. I think that, um, you know, generally, consistency is good. If you treat all of your advisory, advisory committees in the same manner, then that, um, leaves it, uh, without the ability of people to scrutinize. So if the board is, is appointing all of the other advisory committees, then the board should appoint the members of this committee too. Um, if you want to carve out specific requirements, so we must have a CPA, we must have somebody that has served as an auditor, we must have someone that's served in local government, you can add all of those things in there, you can do that for any advisory committee. You can say, "I want somebody that was a soccer coach to serve on our park, sort of, in rec." Um, there are very few statutory requirements for, um, uh, boards other than claimzoning, historic preservation commission, things of that nature. A board of adjustment can be comprised of people that have certain requirements, but that is usually a matter of the town's board, that's in personal preference, or board's preference, not personal preference.
So it's, it's really a matter, to me, John, of having, it's almost like a, a job description, which could come from the audit committee of, here are the, here, here are the preferred or the most important qualifications in our estimation that candidate should have, and this would give the board of commissioners that sort of job description of, of what you're looking for that would help in evaluating the best candidates. And again, it wouldn't be that, um, a recommendation or an opinion coming from you as the chair is valuable, but I, I do tend to agree that we should try to do these, um, the same way across all of the advisory boards. But this one does, this one does need more structure about qualifications, perhaps, than some of the others.
It's not just qualifications, but I'm not sure that you understand, that the audit committee interviews the people. Not just looks at bios and just is a list of instances and interviews. A lot of this is attitude. You really, are you blowing an audit committee? You gonna be able to tell the town manager or the mayor that there's a problem with this, or they have a look at this, they really have a look at it before they bring it to you? And some aren't suited, well, suited to be on that. They want to get on there for a different reason. And the audit committee, the five of them that are all qualified, do a pretty good job so far. We've got a pretty qualified audit, uh, audit committee right now. And that was a few, three years ago, when, when the audit committees were reestablished, and, uh, that the board would trust one of their own to be in charge of four other outsiders who were qualified to make that call. But they don't make the decision, the board makes that decision, and you can overrule it. You're gonna, you're gonna see the bios, you're gonna overrule it.
John, I, I think we understand, but again, the, the issue is that the, that the applicant pool is cut down at the discretion of the people who are already on the board. That doesn't sit right. It just doesn't sit right, that, that the current board members get to choose the other board members that they want to work with. And as you said, you interview somebody, and you don't think their personality is, is up to, to what you think it should be, that's, that's a pretty subjective way of evaluating somebody, and I, and I don't think it's what we should rely on. I think we can do the same thing here. We have people come, and we schedule a half hour. So we could schedule an hour, if it takes that, to have people actually go through an interview as, and there's no reason why you can't read that interview. But I just feel that we should be the same with all our advisory boards, and that in the interest of maybe, uh, protecting the town, we do it so that the board of commissioners, the people who are ultimately responsible for what goes on, are the ones who make the decision. And again, the decision was made three years ago, and it was a different board. Four, four of you folks had run together as a team, and you all got elected, and there wasn't a whole lot of difference when it came to implementing or not implementing an issue. So now there's a different board, some of us have a different attitude. Just like you want to change the document that was drafted three years ago, what did that change? I'm suggesting should be that the board makes the decision on who's gonna be a member of the committee.
Just add one more thing. What you have in front of me and what I supplied to Commissioner Fletcher, what I did was I tried to make the terminology in terms of the title areas consistent with the things that were addressed with the previous board that, I mean, the previous, um, ordinance, uh, for the Inlet Beach Protection Board. So that, that ordinance was structured with powers and duties, appointment and terms, meetings and attendance. Um, I did not include the officers and labels counts, those are the officers' duties in this, because I think that's a discussion for the board, and I didn't have, um, you know, any feedback other than what was presented to me. But, um, you know, trying to make the things consistent within the town's ordinance helps the board, it helps staff, and also helps members that are participating as committee members for those advisory boards, if it's consistent.
I guess, one other thing, just for the sake of being consistent, if we don't want to use the word ensure in number six, should we also change in number seven? We do, we have ensure. We did.
I did.
Sorry.
It's in number five, too.
Um...
Could I move then, since the chair of the audit committee seemed open to call a meeting, that we defer approving this until after the audit committee meets to go through the comments and finalize the charter, and at the same time, the town attorney can be working with the audit committee on its bylaws?
So is the goal to make it consistent, but is it the board's consensus that it should be consistent, the appointment should be consistent with other advisory boards?
No, I think we have motion on four.
We have a motion on four.
Madam Clerk, do you agree with the motion?
To approve the amendment to ordinance 3026 in the form given today by the town attorney.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this board is different because we have a commissioner on the board, so it isn't consistent with our other boards, that we don't require a commissioner on the board, so it is different.
It is different because there is commissioner on the board, that certainly wouldn't be a limiting factor on whether or not you wanted to route the board to weigh in on the other members, but you could or could not.
And I think the difference is the qualifications to be on that board are different than the others as well.
The chair's confused. Madam Attorney, if I were to ask you to show me in writing what we're about to consider for approval, could you do it?
I did, I took my own tape.
Okay, but my reflection is, there was some verbiage changed?
Just those two words.
Two words. Is that the only two changes, those two words?
The only two words have been changed tonight.
Because the clerk has got to have something in the minute.
That was the discussion, was the court, yeah, the court.
I prefer we do it in ordinance, the way we always do, this isn't an ordinance. So typically, the board discusses something, you tell me to do it, and I take it back to the next meeting, I bring it back to the next meeting, and you guys pass it in the form of the ordinance, which tells me to codify it and do all that. So we could take the changes, and I'll bring it to the December meeting for approval, that's what I would prefer to do.
Well, and what I would say is that what I sent in October to Commissioner Fletcher included additional things that y'all had set forth in the inlet and beach protection board, including, in the charter for that organization, the appointment and the terms, the meetings and the attendance. So trying to make it more consistent with what had recently been adopted, and that would not be, that is not included in the current charter, the way that it's outlined. So it's not, it's not as simple as 1 through 12 or be replaced, that would actually replace 30.26, B 1 through 5, but I think you would need to exclude C, and I think that that might go to the clerk's point, which is she's not quite certain what's happening.
That's fair. So does the clerk understand what?
Yes, and I can draft it based on this and have the attorney look at it before we get it to you guys at the next meeting.
And I can send you what I sent.
Okay, thank you.
So that comes back. Are the commissioners asking me to move a question, or are we in agreement that we're going to wait until the next meeting comes back?
We need to take a vote to do this to her. But this is what we're going to do.
Okay, where we are?
Yeah.
I understand it's a motion on four, I just want to make sure it's going to get done while you can. All right, so any more discussion? Do you have any other favor say aye? Favor say nay? Just three to, Madam Clerk. All right. We are on number 12, Mr. Urt.
Yes, sir, regarding the pointer screwing proposals, you have two proposals in your package tonight. The proposal number two, I think I've got them back, proposal number two, and this is in response to the presentation by Mr. McIntyre at previous board meeting, and subsequent directions to bring back the proposals. The two proposals, the first one in your package outlines ten services identified as option two on page 41. The price for that suite of services is a retainer of $9,500 a month, and the option one proposal, which is, the services are outlined on page 49. Those are five services for subject matters, areas that are proposed to be provided by a quenish rule at a cost of $7,500 a month. Term is, for each one of them, is for a year, and in discussion, follow-up discussions informally with Mr. McIntyre, he wanted to express the board's, or their flexibility to work with the board, if there's a desire to remove the services in option one, or pick and pull from either one to come to some sort of a final agreement on exactly what the board would like to see in terms of services. In order to consider either one of them, you'd need to appropriate the funds in budget of the attached budget amendment, and that budget amendment would be, is necessary pre-audit. I proposed an amount of $66,500, which is the amount required to pre-audit the $9,500 a month proposal through the end of this fiscal year. So that's my understanding of the bring back.
That, I'm sorry, I did not print that up, that's what I emailed you guys separately that same day.
I thought I saw it, but I didn't.
And I completely, I did not print it, I'm sorry.
I saw it, but I didn't.
Yeah, same with me.
If there's a desire on the board to move forward with it, you should move to approve one or the other, some form in between, and the budget amendment, or to authorize the manager to further negotiate the proposal, develop the proposal.
I have a question, and I guess a comment. When I look at the agreement, under general waves of conflict, I'm a bit concerned with section B. When I look at this, I want, I'm hired as firm to be our advocate, and I think everybody has that feeling. And the language in the retainer agreement says, "By engaging the firm to represent the client," which is us, "pursuant to the terms of this letter, the client understands and agrees that the firm has represented, and may in the future represent other clients in other matters, no problem, that may be similar to the matters for which they have engaged by the client," again, no problem. But then B says, "that are not substantially in conflict with the work for the client, but are directly or indirectly adverse to the client." That means, the way I read that, and I'll ask counsel to comment, but that they could be representing us and representing another client at the same time, and argue in favor for that other client to our detriment, and I find that to be non-con acceptable.
It's the plain meaning of the words, I, you know, think some of it comes out of the North Carolina rules for advising clients of conflict, so if I choose to undertake representation of two parties that may be aligned at this time, and a conflict becomes apparent down the line, such as only one of them's going to get to sand, but the other one is not going to get to sand, then I have to withdraw, typically unless the client consents to continuing with the conflict. But I would suspect that's why that provision is in there, but I don't have interpreted it or that it's plain meaning of the words.
I mean, to me, it doesn't even, it doesn't even say that. It doesn't even say that I'll withdraw, it says that I could take an adverse position to you. Right?
It appears to, yes.
Yeah, so that means we can actually be paying these people, and they could be arguing to our detriment.
Their representation is subject to the applicable rules of professional conduct. I mean, if that's stated in the contract, that it would be, it would be the case regardless of whether or not it was in this contract or not.
So they would have, they would have to, to use the example of the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, if they had represented both, us and OSHA, at that point, they have to decide who they were going to continue to represent and compete with the other party.
I think that the board rules would require, if that conflict was to arise, that they withdraw from representation from both, is my understanding of the rules of conflict of interest pursuant to North Carolina board rules.
They would have to withdraw from both.
Yeah, unless the party's consented.
Okay, I can live with that.
But we can confirm that if we'd like.
I would, I would write that.
I have, when I go through this, I have a concern that the minimum charge for us on the one thing is $114,000 a year. That's the minimum fee. Minimum fee is $9,000 a month, that's $114,000 a year, plus all city ever expenses, out-of-pocket expenses, and the use of the other consulting firm that they have with us, with absolutely no warranty of any guarantee you're going to get anything. And my concern is to pay that much money for a lobbyist, because I know what a lobbyist has to do, you're trying to convince some senior person to do something, and it's normally with money or votes. And with 350 votes or something, we're not very big on votes, and if we have to pay much more money than that for what we get, it's a really pricey deal. So while it might be the best deal, I would be very interested to see other firms that do this, and if they are more competitive in doing it. As I recall, a month long, there was a 1,500 retainer two years ago. I think when Congressman McIntyre, I think we asked how much it would be, 1,500 a month retainer. Now it's 9,500 a month, and it's the minimum. It only goes up from there. So for me, that's without any competition, without finding out who else might do it, and if they do just as good a job, and the fact that it focuses primarily on federal, very little on North Carolina or county. That's a big risk, I think it's a big risk.
There are a lot of dollars involved here, obviously, and I'd really like to see, you know, it's one thing to approve this, approve the costs associated with doing business, but the other side of the equation is when it comes to understanding exactly how much money we've got coming in and how much money we've got going out. Can we really afford this? Then there's the other side of the equation, you know, can we not afford it? Or, you know, the other side of the equation is, you know, we absolutely have to afford that, you know, to go forward. You know, my recent meeting last week with the North Carolina Beach Inlet and Waterway Association, we attended, a number of us attended the annual conference, and it was just a great discussion. There's more people out there, Noel, I don't know whether you attended, yeah, you were there, you were there. To me, there were more people, there were more people at that meeting, at that conference, that had so many different ideas, and there's so many different groups and that, you know, I even had to thought, when they started to talk, I even said to myself, is, are we fully utilizing Noel's capabilities, capacities? Can Noel help us out more? I'm just teasing, okay? But, you know, I brought the book along with me, and there's no reason for me to read them off to you, but, you know, some of the, some of the work that these folks do, you know, have we, we really exhausted our avenues with this group and the other people that are associated with this group, is really the question I'm asking myself. And this is a lot of money, this is a lot of money. I'm not saying we're not going to get anything for our money, but all I'm saying is, what are the other options? Do we have any other options? What's option A, what's option B, what's option C, is really what I'm saying. I think we need to take, step back to the 20-yard line, we need to look at this again, and we need to maybe make a few phone calls to a few people, and see how they can really, really help us and support us.
So I'll raise you, I went also to the Atlantic Intercoastal Water Association, so Joe was talking about North Carolina, some of us went to regional, from Virginia over to Florida. And just like the North Carolina, there was an individual whose job was to advocate for that group and the individual representations in this group. So we're a member of both these, and I think we should, you know, become much more involved. And to step back, I was ready, I was open to Mr. McIntyre's presentation, I thought it was very, you know, something that we should strongly consider, but I'm a little bit, I'm not a little bit, but I'm a lot taken aback by the price, to be honest with you. So, you know, without, without any actions or goals or projected results within it, I think the price is just too rich for us. And we have other organizations that we already belong to that could, you know, could exploit and get involved in.
I personally think that federal is something that's extremely important, and that is what McIntyre brings. There was the discussion, and he said, you can always pare back. Other clients I have started out smaller and added as it went on. So, you know, we have an option two, we have an option one, and option one still has five items on it. The question is, if you have to pare it down to say, what are our top two? It would probably be Lockwood Folly and Beach Renourishment, and then the question would be, and are federal issues for Lockwood Folly the best way to approach that, or is it Renourishment? But again, we can respond, this was part of the discussion of, it's not a try us and see if you like us, it's a, you know, really, they know that a lot of municipalities have small budgets, and it's a pick your, you know, pick your top priority, let us work on it, show what we can do, get you the wins that then enable you to get money, get grants, whatever, and then, you know, add on to it after the first successes, or if you've got what you need, that's all. So I'm just saying, I don't think that you have to, you have to say that it's too rich for our blood, is it that what you're willing to pay, and I don't know what you're willing to pay, I'm just going to say that this didn't surprise me, the cost didn't surprise me. But is it that we actually need to whittle back option one further to get something that is within what you're willing to spend?
I don't know, I guess I would, David, I would ask, what, clearly, one of our major concerns is Lockwood Folly and whether we get the material from the dredging, et cetera,
Folly and whether we get the material from the dredging, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And there's, seems to be an opportunity coming up this year where they're going to make a decision on what they're going to dredge, how much material is going to be removed, and where that material is going to be. But can you refresh our recollection and let us know approximately if they've determined when those decisions are going to be made?
It's my understanding that when the bids were opened on October the thirtieth, that the bids actually exceeded the available budget, and so that they're having to circle back around and go back through the procurement process. Christie?
But at the Byways Conference last week, the guy giving the report from the Corps did say that it looked like they were going to be able to work through their issue. It was about a million dollars over, roundabout, and it looked like the contract was going to be awarded to South Winds for it to go on to Oak Island. So it looks like they're moving forward with the original plan where it hit a stall with the storm.
Right, but, but there was supposed to be another one or two projects, right? And one with the widener and so forth and so on. I was, I was more concerned, I know we, we already lost that sand, but we're very much concerned about ongoing projects, right?
Yes.
So I guess, just, just like in Titan and not, we've decided to pay forty-seven thousand dollars to ATM to do a study to justify why we should get that sand for that material. And so we've expended, we've already agreed to expend that money. Would it, if we, if we retained this company, would they be able to benefit us on the projects that are scheduled but haven't been decided yet? Or would the lack of our having, according to the Corps, of the lack of our having the proper easements, would be a nullity, a void? I'm just wondering, do, do we have to strike now, or do we put it off for, for six months and then use the opportunity to get the benefit of the scheduled project or the anticipated project?
And I'll, I'll say this, I think that the, the dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet, that, that is going to require federal involvement regardless of what plant is used, and, you know, that's also tied into the state's development of, of its dredge, which is going to take a couple of years, but still, you know, in general, my feeling is that this, this, this federal dredging issue is a, is a game that's played above the rim by seven footers, and, and, and we don't have that type of, of horsepower, and it's played on a court at the Capitol. And that's where that type of intersection error on, that's looking out for our interest from the, the Corps' perspective would have benefited. The other, the other piece of that, I'd remind the Board that you just had a federal election that now has the majorities in the House that are split, Democrat, Republican, and that's going to require even more challenges to be, or, or prove to be even a more challenging play in the field for getting involved and making sure that the federal dollars come this way to Southeast North Carolina. I don't know if I answered the question.
Maybe, maybe I didn't ask the question well enough, but I guess I was, I was asking on a timeliness question, if they're going to do the bend widener, right? We, we, we're concerned about getting a fair shake on the bend widener. So do we have to make a decision now in order to try to influence the decision that's going to be made on the material from the bend widener? Or is that been put on the back burner, so no, no contracts are going to be, or no decisions are going to be made? And I'll be still up in the air about the easements, which I would imagine would preclude us from getting it if they followed the same rationale that they are for the current, you know, Lockwood Folly project.
We're waiting for determination by the real estate department on the information that we submitted them in support of the fact that we do not need easements.
I'm sorry, do, everybody?
You have to speak up, I got to speak.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting for the Corps to, real estate department, or real estate, yeah, I guess, department, to make determination on whether or not we need easements based on the information that we supplied them. So a lot of information that Framway prepared, showing historic mean high watermark versus post-project measurements, we put that on a map, actually, I think four or five maps, and sent it to the Corps and asked them to justify their position that easements were needed. I got confirmation of that in October, and have not yet, they have not yet rendered a decision. So, but we're still collecting easements during the meantime, that, they haven't stopped that initiative also, but I'm hoping that they'll say, you don't need easements.
Go back to what it was?
That's right.
Six months ago.
That's right.
Okay.
And I don't know if they've closed the bend widener issue or not based on the contract, them having to go back and negotiate. The last word that we got at the Brunswick Shoreline meeting was that they said that after the contract was executed, they came up with who was the apparent low bidder, that they would be willing to sit down with the two towns and talk at the joint meeting at the county, is what I heard, but there's been no follow-up from the Corps, so I don't know if their timeline has changed based on the contract getting stalled.
So, yeah, that's why I'm thinking, it's, it's really driven, it's in the county now, right?
Yeah, they would, I'm giving correct me if I'm wrong, David, but they would have to be willing to turn the contractor loose to negotiate with either side about getting the bend widener and having that time in their contract with the environmental windows of everywhere they're going to be able to do that. So I guess it would be up to the contractor on whether he thought he could now, based on now's timing, do that, whether we would have a chance at that in the next few months, is that?
But it's also a county funding issue as well, right?
A county funding issue, how, say that again?
As far as the burden shared that would go into that type of project, yes. But I would also, what Christie's talking about in the Corps turning the contractor loose to negotiate with the towns is, in that scenario, that work would be performed under the town's permit.
Did you have that permit, right?
The SDI five permit.
Well, but.
Because what, when they, when they ran into the headroom in the federal contracting law, they're going to be prohibited from, from performing add-on work as far as a change order, it's going to be cost prohibitive. Of course, you, you can't go above a certain threshold over the original contract, and that's about as close as I'm familiar with that, but that will be problematic for them, and that's why the, the staple was made that they will be turned loose to negotiate with the towns on, on a potential project. But those are, those are project.
Are you talking about the add-on that's currently happening, that's scheduled for Oak Island?
The add-on project subsequent to this thirty-October bid opening that just occurred, that's the bend widener.
But, but again, the essence of it is, we don't know where they, they're going to deposit the material, but they seem to be throwing us a bone, saying, but that, don't worry about that, because we're going to let you go and add on to this project, and you can get some material that way. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So, so I go back to my question is, if we hire these people today, will they have an opportunity to be our advocates, or has the Corps already gone out of its barn on that particular issue? I think I can answer it myself, if they opened up the, the bids on October thirtieth, it's, it's a done deal, right?
Funding's already down, probably, they're just going to open up the bids.
All right, so, I think one thing we need to get out of the way is the easement issue, you know, and, and you're doing a great job of that and everything. Any expectations as far as when we might be able to complete that? I mean, I understand you got a letter, you know, that you sent out and drawings and everything, and easements for properties that are under water, but.
Um, we're sending out a follow-up letter to folks that we have not heard from on Monday. I do have some concern about the timing of, but basically the fact that the mail system sort of shut down for a while, and I think that particularly in some of the areas that these easements were sent, they probably got put at the bottom of the pile. So we're sending out additional correspondence, and we had to do this probably four or five times during the Central Reach Project prod, 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 people to please return the easement. So that's going out on Monday, and I'm planning on following up with the Corps, my contact at the Corps, next week, to see where the real estate department goes with their determination, or see if there's any additional information that we could supply them that would aid them in rendering a determination with the state of North Carolina and inside Beach.
Yeah, we, we'd really love that tour, our tour bus, to say it's complete.
Sure. If I may, I'd, I'd just like to sort of, a few things that are floating around. There's been a comment that this is expensive, unless it's expensive, and there hasn't actually been any discussion of, of where people would feel comfortable. There's been a discussion of the importance of federal within the state and this county, and there's been a discussion of maybe there, there's a need to go out and look for other providers who, you know, to get competitive bids and things. So these are all, you know, out there. So my question is, if we want to go out and look for other providers, who's going to do that now and then? And it still comes down to as well as, what are the priorities at a federal level, a state level, and a county level, that you have to service all of them? But it, it's, it's like, what do we want as our top priorities to start getting our voice heard? Because it's not a month before something happens that you have to have your voice heard, it has to be building up to it. So we have a lot of reservations here, and it's easy to say, this isn't coming together, we have all these reservations. But if you do believe, and I thought we believed, we do need what I'll need at a federal level, as well as a state and county level, what are our next steps so that we're not here again next year, and it's like we didn't have, we missed the opportunity to do something? So, you know, if we want other, other options, who's going to look for those options? Who's going to go, who's, who in this room is going to identify other companies, other lobby groups that, that we could then interview as competitive? Are we, in our exhibit ones, still too broad? Is it that we want something smaller to start out with? You know, and again, it comes down to what, what is this board comfortable spending? There is never a guarantee of a win, but you can look at people's track records of how much have been managed to win, which should be part of interviewing anybody. But, you know, it's, it's like, we had a lot of discussion, but I don't see it coming to a what is next.
But I had two other parts of the discussion that I had to hear and say, you know, we talked about the, the North Carolina Waterway and, and the regional board rules that we've talked, Joe and I are familiar with, and I know you do, and Mike or not, I guess, but those do offer advocacy for, for us. And the other thing that I mentioned that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with is, you know, I don't quite understand, I used to write statements works, services contracts, and I don't quite understand advise and assist, and, you know, assist with the legal matters and legal issues arise, and perform the following services. I don't know what that means, I don't, I don't see any actions, I don't see any goals, projected results, I mean, if we were going to ask them to sponsor a bill, you know, a bill, or, or a budget, or something like that, I don't see any real language in this contract. Those are the other two, two things I like, figured less. I guess I would, those two things, that, relax me, it's a good point, we could, we could ask them to send us something that would describe how they would hope to help us in the Lockwood Folly, or to get a grant, right? Some, some kind of step-by-step, that, that, that's, that's a good idea. And I guess I have a question, when we talk about the, the two groups that would be advocacy, do they actually become advocates for one North Carolina municipality against another? Or do they just advocate for the general area to try to get funds that can be dispersed to all the various components? Because what we need is somebody who's going to take our side against those other guys' sides in the neighborhood.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, but I, I think what we could also do is ask them to work with two municipalities and have an agreement that we share that resource as well.
But we heard Fran say that we really can't share that resource, right? That we, if we get the two hundred thousand cubic yards every two years, that'll stabilize the expense, but we can't go.
No, that was, that was my point with the hundred and forty.
Yeah, he said, he can't, he just said, we can't, we really can't. We, we have to, and, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not arguing for retaining the firm, I'm just, I'm just saying, when we think about it, will the advocacy group actually help us? And, you know, in, in this, in this particular type of dispute that we're going to wind up with, or do we really need a firm that, that has some weight that, that's going to do it for us? And so, you know, when, when you look at, when you look at all those things, we have to decide whether we want to jump in, whether we want to wait, which, which option we would choose to finance if, if any.
Well, the, the cloud over our head right now is the same, you know, retaining the sand out of the Lockwood Folly, and having a better understanding of exactly where do we stand a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, pertaining to permits and all these contracts being awarded and funds being available. We can certainly use some help on that issue.
And to go to Pat's point, we've lost the sand this year, and we don't want to lose it two years from now. So do we, you know, is it hard for us to retain a lobbyist firm, to argue so that we're prepared when two years, you know, when they're going to make that decision again, so you don't get blindsided again? And hopefully, within two years, the, the question, the easements would be settled.
But do you think that's a federal level, us getting that sand versus Oak, Oak Island getting that sand?
Well, the state, Army Corps of Engineers made a decision, that's, that's a federal entity, so they're the ones who made the call, correct?
That's correct. That's a, that's a federally authorized county.
And, uh, they're not up for reelection. These are government employees, these are long-term government employees, and you want somebody who really knows what they're doing to convince them to do something our way.
So you think, so you think that decision was made at the federal level to give it to Oak Island this time, or should it be us?
When we went, when we went, spoke to them, that's who we spoke to, we didn't speak to anybody from the county.
We, we spoke to a Wilmington district armed corps of engineer project manager.
That's a federal, that's a federal employee.
I, I noticed, but I think, you, you think that decision was made in Washington, D.C., that's the question?
It was allowed. Let's just say it was allowed.
Well, maybe we, we need to go back and ask, Peter's suggestion was, what, what Well, maybe we need to go back and ask, Peter's suggestion was, what can they do for us pertaining to the Lockwood Folly inlet, as far as scope of work? And just kind of tie the project down a little bit. And if they're interested in taking it, that'd be the other part.
Yeah, one of us kind of, for me, Pat suggests she doesn't have any problem with cost.
I'm not surprised.
No, you're not surprised. I do. I love this stuff. This is eight thou, or nine thousand five hundred a month to start. That doesn't include the cost of representation or the out-of-pocket cost. That's just, for me to be your guy, could it cost you this every month, whether I do anything or not?
I would suggest that we can forget that number and just go to option one, so you're down to that. We don't need 10 different.
Well, seven thousand five hundred a month.
No, I agree. No, it's still nine thousand. I understand. I can do the math. But I'm just saying, we, you know, I agree that we don't need the premier representation. If we get represented for five different items, and they can be successful, then that's, I'm good with that.
I'm just saying, let's ask some questions.
What we just, I would suggest, and I don't know if I'll do, that you contact the firm and ask them if they could do a scope of work specific to Lockwood Folly. And then we can revisit this at the next meeting, once we get the scope of work.
And you would mention, like, rather than federal issues related to the Lockwood Folly, you let me just give a little more meat to that?
Whatever. We can ask them. We can speak by day and decide what to do.
You know, what are they gonna do? What, a larger scope of work?
I tell you, I'm actually intrigued by the idea of being able to get federal grants that we may not have. Although the town has done a wonderful job getting grants for lots of things, if they're aware of some grant money that's out there that we could tap into, they could pay for themselves, if they could do that. So, those two issues, I think, are important.
If I could, just for clarity, what you're asking for is basically a redo of proposal and concentrate on the Lockwood Folly inlet maintenance, and federal issues relating to the Lockwood Folly inlet maintenance, and federal issues related to beach nourishment?
Something like that.
I think, my thing was based on what, you know, what Pete said, is if we could get a better idea of exactly what the scope of work is, what would they do, how would they do it, how would it influence them, how would it benefit us, I think is what Pete would put, not put words in his mouth.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I was, I call that deliverable, you know, that's what, you know.
It would be sort of like deliverables, estimated timeframe, and I'm not saying to the month.
Right.
And probability of success.
Yeah, just gotta do something a little bit.
Does that make sense, David? It's a general sort of, you know, in these type of jobs, when they've done it before, these types of issues, what's been their, what's been their sort of success level? You know, about how long do they, how long is this battle? And just a rough, what are some of the steps that are taken that helps justify the cost that is given?
I'm gonna pass a gavel, if I have permission to pass a gavel to my mayor for a minute, so I may speak. About three years ago, maybe more, maybe it was three and a half or so, I offered the suggestion that we hire somebody to represent and speak for us. It went nowhere. A year ago, it came up again. It went nowhere. I'm hearing tonight, I hope wrongly, my interpretation, what I'm hearing is that we're not enthusiastic about it again this year. I am happy to have seen commissioners at a day and a half of the NC Byway meeting. And I'm also excited to hear that they felt like it was a good meeting and they learned And it was a good meeting, and there was a lot they learned. What just continues to tear me up is those of us that have been doing it for decades have no voice. When we try to share what we have learned over decades over one of these meetings, well, I'm not saying that. In the last three years, Holy Beach has gone downhill in its sand project. The highlight that the town has had and enjoyed in recent years is something that groundwork was done years before, the $15 million sand project. And I think I'll always agree, it was generally a good, successful program. We're now voting essentially on allowing one of the main voices behind the scenes that had happened, helped make that happen. We don't need that person anymore. We don't need the person anymore that was voted the best member of Congress, as far as working both sides of the aisle, according to those that voted him in that position. So, you can't say he's a Democrat or a Republican, that. He was voted by both parties to be the most professional working both sides, and he just worked with when he was in Washington for 18 years. And the list just goes on and on. And I am just so dejected. I don't know how this town, I mean, we just got over a battle about, please, please don't sue the town next door. People, we going down tubes in our PR. We going down tubes in our power. We are, I mean, we got to get something positive going. And if you want to ride in a Mercedes, guess what you're gonna do? You gotta buy a Mercedes. If you want to ride a Pinto, get your used Pinto, bounce down the road. Do you want a successful representation that has been there, done all that, knows the right buttons to push, and knows what they're doing, a good Christian man that won't cheat you? Or do we want to go shopping again? In the meantime, in that three-year period or so, they've been hired up straight out of state by another town on the ocean. And yes, they have loyal people to them because, hey, they hired a person. And I challenge you, and I am willing to listen to anyone, any town, any party whatsoever that can find any dirt on mine, any dirt of any kind, personal, business, politically, anything else. What more can we want? He told us that we can choose, we can choose the way we wanna hire them. He's given us a list or two, and he says, if that's not what you want, tell me what you want, and we will fix the agreement to your satisfaction. You don't have to take the whole menu. Take the little guy or something. But by God, we gotta do something. Ocean Isle's got a project going over there. And we sit right here, and Oak Island has jerked the sand away from us. It's done behind the scenes. What can I say to you people to get you to understand? It's done behind the scenes. It's not done in an open meeting like this. You've gotta have contacts. You've gotta have trust. You've gotta go to meetings over and over and over and over again to build these bonds, so we can work together. And we do not have it. And I'm not, you know, I don't know what else to say. If you don't wanna hire Mike McIntyre and whatever, for God's sakes, hire somebody with a good reputation and knows what they're doing. But you gotta do something, or we just gonna keep you in our boat, be right on down, and we're gonna watch money go into other places. There's nothing nice to be saying. And that's what's happened to this town of Holy Beach. That's just where we are. I've been at it a long time. If anybody wants to disagree with what I'm saying, I'm willing to listen to you and take my punishment for being wrong. But I've got confidence that I'm right. And, you know, it's tough when you watch some of your fellow elected officials laugh at you for what you've done recently. That's tough. I just hope we can get better. We gotta get better. We don't get beat worse. That's all I gotta say. Can I have a gavel back soon as we can? Thank you. All right. Any motions?
Can we agree on the top two priorities that we would like to have a cost estimate on?
Yes.
Sure, I thought we agreed on that.
The inlet and re-nourishment, because there was some discussion as well about grants. So, I just wanna make sure. Can we move that the town manager approaches the firm again and asks them for an estimate for those two topics, and some more information around steps that would be taken, and a sort of a estimate of how long before some meaningful results could be expected? Is that basically what we would like, to have a better understanding of the value of retainers?
Yeah, I think even including, what's it gonna cost us extra? This is, the retainer doesn't have anything to do with the work. That's without doing any work. So, what would they think? Twice that to get the results?
No, that, it doesn't, that doesn't act, it's not that.
That's what it says.
It doesn't pay for their travel expenses. It does not.
Or the cost of representation.
They're guaranteed a certain amount a month, whether or not you use their services or not. If you use their services, it's billed against the retainer that they are collecting every month, up to $9,500. If you go above the $9,500 and you have to pay them, their hourly rates are, well, they, actually, they've got a range of hourly rates in there. But it's not 95, if they do nothing, it's $9,500. If they do five hours of work, it's still $9,500. If they do 500 hours of work, it's going to be in addition to the $9,500.
Which of answers, yes?
Okay, so we move that town manager approaches owners through with the additional questions around the cost and the basic steps for specifically Lockwood Folly inlet and beach re-nourishment.
One second.
No motion, one second. Any discussion? Can you not nod in favor of the I?
Not sure.
So, say no. She now is counted. Number 13, Mr. Butler.
Last month, we discussed parking. And I believe we discussed a couple of other things that probably didn't end up in the motion, but I would like to amend the scope of work for the recently created parking advisory committee within the PNC. And that would include the next phase of the project. It would be taking a look at Jordan Boulevard. Jordan Boulevard, my understanding is a number of years ago, that there was an engineer that came, he'll be hired, and he developed a, I guess, an architectural drawing. And that, we can't locate it. But maybe what we can do is contact the company. And I'm not telling this advisory committee what I would do, but maybe we can kind of try to contact that company and try to resurrect that drawing and have a look at that. And the other, the other item on there was the discussion about parking, and possibly the kiosk technology, implementation of the kiosk technology. And, you know, right now, we're all kind of scratching our head, and we're looking around at different sources. Not saying we're doing anything, but a revenue source potentially being parked. So, I'd like to just amend the scope of work to include those.
Okay. Everybody understand the last?
Matt Clark, are you saying that's what's on page 54, Joe?
Yeah. What's on page 54?
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
What about his comments?
Good. I'll second it.
John's second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Here you go. Now, if you're a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, now. Number 14, Ms. Pat.
Okay. I know we have discussion on possible approval of ordinance 1816. And I know we have versions of it out here for several months and erupted by storms. It is, it is not really my intent that we ramrod this through to approve the ordinance today, because it is the first time people are seeing what we're saying is a final version that has been discussed with town staff as well as the town attorney. But the intent is for the Board of Commissioners to amend the existing code of ordinance related to solid waste to make it more clear, more complete, and in cases where education doesn't work, more enforceable. We've basically tried upfront to better define all of the different types of waste that we're discussing, to go through container specifications again, the requirements for the number of specifications, how garbage is supposed to be kept in the cans, what collection rules are. There's a section in there on yard waste, and how it's dealt with. Again, very specific about the number of cans that have to be maintained by rental properties, and the clear statement that violations will be subject to penalties. We only got a couple written comments come in to us after the last meeting. And we did ask for the public to send by email anything that they, you know, had objection to or wanted to see. So, this is the product of those couple comments. And again, town staff, town attorney, coming up with what they felt was a clear, concise, and enforceable ordinance. So, I just opened it up to the commissioners for any questions, comments, things that they see that they have a concern with.
So, yeah, I saw two from Gail Alabon. Did you read those coming? And from David Clark? I know they came really late, so I.
Yes, I, we did, we, I have seen Gail's before, and that had a lot to do with corrals. And to me, we're dealing in some part then with a rollback issue, which will be, which is the next topic we have to discuss. Because let me be clear, amending this ordinance the way we amend it without having a rollback decision makes no sense. So, if we're not gonna make a rollback decision, we may as well not push this ordinance through. But I believe it's our intent to make that rollback decision before this would start to be enforced. And again, we're not talking about having anything to formally vote on to. Um, and again, we're not talking about having anything to formally vote on to next month for this. So if we can take it in the spirit of, we will suck it up one more time, and we will make a decision on rollback, then let's proceed on how people feel about this ordinance.
I mean, I'll say this, I have a couple comments, you know, in the last one, you know, we should get people, you have a separate date of tomorrow, and I know-
Oh, that, that was, that was typical. I think that we had originally put something in about the enforcement actions weren't going to start until-
Okay, good.
And I, I need to look and make sure, because we had had it in there originally, and I don't know if it disappeared.
I may have deleted it.
That's where I'm going.
Boots, yeah, we weren't planning on starting to enforce until May first.
Right. So, stuff like that. So, but I will, like everything else, go through this one. And I totally agree with roll, rollback, interval, parties.
Well, yes.
Would it also help, we, I know, I don't remember all the details associated with waste management, you know, letter that we received with waste management, but based on one of the comments that I received today, may it, might be who else to maybe include some of those, some of that information in either the, the letter that we sent out, on the Holden Beach letter that we sent out, or the, you know, David, it's not a letter, it's a newsletter, that. Would it be helpful if we, what am I trying to remember? Waste, waste management, waste management sent us a letter-
Oh, and they sent-
Saying that they're not going to put the-
The corrals.
The corral. All the issue with the corrals. Well, that would help to resolve, the lady that took her time really to send us that, that email. But there's a lot of other information that's also in that, in that letter. So this is not David that's being the bad guy here. This is try to provide the town with information as to what we're receiving. And I, and I think it's important to clarify that, for people to understand that. There's a lot of confusion out there right, right now. And what, I- Maybe we can put it even on the website, and what we communicate, the better.
I would, I would think that once you got to resolution on the ordinance and what you want to do with the rollback program, that would be the time to put forth that type of information, because right now, regardless of what you tell, what you put out about corrals is probably wrong and in conflict with the existing ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter, you said you had a few comments that you want to send. Um, do other people have the same thing? Because could I ask that you send them, like, within a week? So that we can incorporate them? Because again, it, as Heather says, it seems like it's really easy, but I sat with her for hours. It's not easy.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, if anybody else has comments?
Yeah, I, I provided a couple of comments, I think, about rollback and rollout.
That's the next topic.
Okay.
Just, just, I want to ask council something. When I, I look at the document on the yard waste and under rental homes, there are adverbs that I think would make it a little more difficult to enforce this than if we struck those adverbs. It says that property owners who are consistently found in violation. I see no reason why we should have consistently. If you're found in violation, then you're maybe seeking written notice. So I would, I would say to take that out. And on the rental home, it says resulting in abnormally large volumes of trash. But people are going to argue about what's normal and abnormal. Just, just give into that stuff, so it doesn't confuse the issue. If you're found in violation, you get the notice, and if you leave the trash around, you get the notice.
Okay.
Now, we've got two penalties, basically criminal and civil, is that normal?
Yes. Okay, our objective is going to be to have a final version that we can vote on in December, that we can approve. And I, I had hoped that we would hear some couple of comments today. So we haven't yet. And maybe, again, getting it out there for December, if people do have some concerns, they'll express them before the meeting. Okay. Now, the discussion of waste can rollback options and implications. It's amazing when you sit down and start talking back and forth with people, how many different rollback options you can come up with. You know, I think we've discussed before, there's the, well, let's just abandon it and let the cans fly where they may, and all of us say, no way. And then there's the, well, the town will just take it up and do it everywhere, and that's how it'll be. And then there's the, well, maybe we can find someone that we can contact with. And then you start to get into, but do we do it in the summer or not?
We move right on to the next question.
Yes, well, rollback. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just get so enthused about trash talk.
I'm just, yeah, go ahead. You do anything you want to do, I don't give a rat's.
Anyway, my, here, here's, here's, after, after putting together a list with somebody of like eight different options for rollback, believe it or not, I think the best thing to do, I hate to say this, is let's have a workshop in December and sit down together and hammer through this. Because if we try to do it in a meeting like this, we may be here too. So could the commissioners agree that we will have a specific workshop to decide what the rollback is going to be? Um, because again, if we don't decide that, we really can't.
I think you've got an idea.
Yeah.
Let's do that, how about we just, let's do the subject, you know? Let's include the, the, the- Ordinance itself. Order itself, too.
If, if we can do it early enough in December, that, that would be great. Heather, could you-
Since they're so related.
Yeah. We could just do it all, we could do ordinance finalization and, and definition of rollback program, because that's what it has to be.
There's a lot of options that we need to-
Yes, yeah. Could, Heather, could you, um, do a call out to everybody about an available date in the first part of December, first half of December?
Sure.
Could I ask?
Yeah.
With, with the various options, obviously, it's continue as we do or to make modifications. Could we have some sort of estimate on the cost of the various options? Because just discussing the options isn't going to do it. We have to know what the cost is, whether it's a reduction in cost by doing the way we did the tollway, or whether it's an increased cost by, I don't know, it would give me a hell of a lot of work.
Well, I, I think that some of these options are going to, um, we know what the costs are today, but to make an assumption, if you expand, for example, our existing services, let's say island wide, we're just going to do island wide rollback, um, that, that is going to rise to a level of, that you really need to bid that out in order to get a, a good, hard, competitive estimate. Anything else, um, is, is real speculative. Um, yeah, we can say, well, a straight mind, it's, it's thirty thousand dollars a day, it'll be five times as much. Well, uh, until we have a service provider that actually goes out there and, and does an estimate on what that is, to, to set that up for a decision that's going to be implemented in January, it may not be realistic to do that, to, to go through and get a hard, um, competitive bid set up for that. I don't want, if you want me, if you want me to take a crapshoot at what the cost is going to be, I'm not comfortable with doing that. It, it needs to be, those types of things need to be bid out, because what we're really talking about is one extreme, it's probably going to be in six figures as far as what it's going to cost.
But it will, it will be hard for me to make a decision, not knowing how that decision's going to affect the taxpayers of the town or the homeowners of the town. But I, I mean, I was hoping not only for a ballpark figure of if we expand it so we do what we're doing on, on, you know, Ocean Boulevard for everybody, but if we do it for nobody, and it's going to be up to the homeowner to pay for that. Right, we're going, we're going to demand that it, that the trash cans get put back someplace. So either we're going to pay for it in some form, or the homeowner's going to pay for it in some form. And I think we need to know what it's going to cost before we actually make a intelligent decision which way to go. And so-
Totally agree, and I don't even know what options you're talking about, because, you know-
No.
Is I, is I coming?
No, I didn't, no. No, no, I think we haven't. But, but, so you're saying I'm, I'm-
No, we haven't even, we haven't even defined what we're asking him to-
No.
Right, so I totally agree.
But all I'm saying is that we, we want to have a work day to, to work on this, but at, at the end of that day, we won't be able, at least I, I won't feel comfortable making a decision on not knowing what the actual cost is.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I don't know, it's, it's the chicken and the egg, or, you know, one, one way or the other, it makes it very difficult.
So we have to start somewhere.
Yeah. The workshop's a great idea.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't want to sign the staff up for semi-wild guesses on something that's undetermined, but I think we might be able to get something worthy of discussion. It's not going, it's going to be wholly a swiss cheese, but at least, um, we could, we could, and I'm inferring probability on discussions with our current vendor on what their perspective might be on some of the, the options that I've discussed with Pat, or, you know, that through our discussions on the, on the solid waste. Now, that, that may just be a foundation document for discussion for the board's workshop, and, um, but it would, I, I don't know if, if our current vendor would be forthcoming with that, because then that gives implications into a bid process on, you know, showing your cards on what the bid is. But we'll give us that.
I think we narrowed down what you want, what we, we'd ask you to go out to bid for.
And if anybody has any, any knowledge of potential contractors who would be interested, it would be nice enough. Trash is on-
All ready to turn page? Are we done, or? Is that where we are? Ms. Patton, I'll talk to number sixteen.
Okay. Um, the North Carolina League of Municipalities is having an advocacy goals, advocacy goals conference where participating municipalities would be involved in the discussion and voting of reducing, I think it's right now thirty-three, uh, thirty-three advocacy goals down to the fifteen that the, we will focus on over the next couple of years. Um, this is, this is actually something that, uh, when it came up, I was asking the town staff about. Um, and we missed the opportunity to actually send goals in. It, it, these, these blasts were coming during the summer, and I have to say, I, I remember now getting blasts and not really thinking about, oh, we should talk at the town level about do we have something to do? But by us going to this, this year, we can sort of get a flavor of how this is working and have input. Um, town manager and I are going. We are, we are told to designate our voting delegate for the advocacy goals conference, and I would like the board to agree that having the town manager, David Hewitt, cast our votes at the meeting is the appropriate delegate.
Senator, former motion.
I move that David Hewitt be designated the delegate to vote for Holden Beach at the advocacy goals conference.
Second. Okay. Discussion? Anybody?
Don't you better understand some of the, some of the goals?
Um, the league, when they sent out their communications, the last several, they do have in there, you know, here are the goals that are going to be voted on.
Okay, are, are the goals in line with what our expectations are?
There's, there's-
Okay, that's, that's-
Some, some don't apply to us, but some do apply to us.
Yeah, okay.
May I make a suggestion? No. I believe we have somebody in the audience from the league. If you'd like to have some input, you might be able to ask that person some of his questions, if you set the timer. President Smith. If you would come. Nothing like impromptu. Give us your name and what you do.
Nothing at all like impromptu. Hi, my name's Ann White, and I work for the league. We're in a relatively new division that's representing all of North Carolina, and I am the designated for southeastern North Carolina. That being said, I have no idea how to answer her question.
Well, I know.
I just wanted to observe and introduce myself if the opportunity arose. And, um, I know that the importance of the meeting that you're discussing for everybody, given the, as you said, thirty-three goals and going to a number that is manageable to get some real action in legislature is, is not here yet. But thank you for recognition, and I look forward to meeting with you all.
You can slap me later.
I'm here.
Thank you.
More motion, we have a second.
Any more discussion?
I think David understands our, our needs.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In favor, say no. Anything else, Ms. Pat?
No, I think I'm finished.
All right, we're on number seventeen, Ms. Self.
I asked to have this item placed on the agenda because I attended the last meeting of the Inlet Beach Protection Board along with a number of other commissioners. And it just seems during the meeting that the board was questioning amongst the members of the board what their scope of responsibility and the task that they should undertake, and whether they needed permission from the Board of Commissioners to do several things, or they could do that on their own. And as I listened to it, I thought that perhaps they could use a little bit of direction. I know we tried to do that by having a meeting between the board and the committee when it was first formed. And so I, I had this concern. And I had the concern that as dedicated as they are and as motivated as they are, they could go off and do a tremendous amount of, of work and research on a topic that we really don't want to research or work on. So I actually gave a call to the chairman of the, the committee to ask if she had the same feeling, you know, after attending the meeting. And she hasn't, doesn't, I'm going to speak for her, but she told me that she did not. Now, as I said, other members of the Board of Commissioners was there. I don't know if they had the same feeling, but some of them made comments about what was being discussed by the, the committee. So it's just out there. I guess it's an open invitation to the advisory board that if they need some direction, that they're confused, that we're willing and eager to assist in any way we can. So I would say we'll do the same thing that we did with this board. Yeah, Nikki? If, if you want to comment, feel free.
Could I comment first?
Sure.
I'll take you off the hot spot maybe.
Okay.
So in this case, you know, I'm the Executive Secretary, so I asked that the ordinance be placed as backup for this agenda item. And, and I think I'm, I missed, I was late, but I mean, so I didn't see the interaction. But I think we spent a lot of time in this ordinance. And if you read this ordinance, and I'll read just one sentence, it's pretty clear, um, that we've asked them to prepare and recommend to the Board of Commissioners a comprehensive long-term plan for the town's role, if any, in the management, dredging, and protection of the lot with its folly and shows them that, including their respective navigation channels and the management protection, the management of the town's protection, which is a protective system. So we codify our ask of that board pretty, pretty definitively. And, and in order, and, and if they're doing work to support that comprehensive long-term plan and what I just wrote, then that's pretty, pretty clear. And the board, as a whole, accepted this, um, ordinance. And, and I'd also say, a next subject, um, you know, we have another board that I think is doing the right thing by, you know, uh, you know, looking at, uh, different things that were not individually, you know, they weren't, you know, um, micromanaged, told what to do as well. So I think, um, the board's been pretty clear of what we're asking them to do.
Well, I would, I would just say that I agree with you, that the ordinance is clear. But that doesn't mean that the ordinance is being enforced. And now we're about to see that I didn't agree to their questions about whether they should proceed to look into items that we have voted on, I believe. And I don't think, I don't think that's one of the, that's all we're looking for, right? So again, I, I am not in any way, shape, or form criticizing the board. But I'm just saying if, if they need, if, if we need to get together so that, like you just read, and what we've codified is understood to be the objective. If they already, if they already had that discussion at the last meeting and they're back to that objective, then that's fine. That's why I was asking Nikki what I do.
So, I mean, they were going forward, they, they wanted to add some things to the agenda. My understanding is, and, and they were requesting on the others.
But... You want to hear from Nikki? Are you okay?
Um, I guess I would say...
If you would come, then I, of course, can record you.
I think you all know how I love to speak explicitly. Um, I guess I would wonder what it was that you were thinking that you were discussing that you had already voted on, but...
I, I have to go look at the, maybe you can help.
I could, I could tell you the items. Um, we had motion to, um, uh, look at, to discuss the items that were in the corner school. That's probably one of your questions. The twenty-four items, the five items, and...
I believe that there was something, whether it was about the resolution that, that we had passed that was being distributed, so that we've had discussions about that.
Uh...
And, and about...
The resolution regarding the polling?
Yes.
No, not to my ask.
Was it your goal statement?
It could have been, yeah, the item was a goal statement. The mission statement?
The mission statement, yeah.
No problem. But that, that was just a question that was asked about whether it should go through the board.
It was a question, how do you...
You need to just put that, so, so you were going to discuss the meeting. Or it was going off the power, and you should get involved and give us some advice on the meeting.
This is too big.
Again, again, this is, this is getting more complicated than I thought. My question was, do you need, as we discussed, do you need to have a meeting so that what we desire the board, what we authorize the board, is what you do? Or do you feel that you're comfortable and that everybody understands what is expected and what the ordinance authorizes?
Um, I think that we are all very familiar with the ordinance and exactly what you're asking us to do. Um, you, the long-term plan for the beach is going to take a lot of background research on all of our parts, which I think the rest of the boards weren't very diligently to do. Um, so it's going to be broad, but I'm assuming you would want that in the report.
Absolutely. There's no, there's no questions. There's no question.
Kind of sounds like we're harmonized.
That what?
We're harmonized. It's a judge.
I think the board could, could agree though, that if any of our committees or our boards have a question, we're here. They just come, come to the meeting and ask for clarification, you'll get it. If you don't think you should do it, come and ask the board, and we'll tell you. If you want to do it, and you want to expand it, come and ask the board, and you get an immediate response.
Well, and I'd also tell you that, um, I think our board is the only one who sends you a memo that we've all agreed on each month, um, which you get in your packet each month. I don't think any of the other boards do that.
You all agree with it.
Pardon?
It's part of the legislation that they...
Part of the ordinance, correct.
Or the...
So, um, hopefully, they're all very up to speed on what's going on with this board.
Just going to remind the board that even though you are attending as a citizen, the Beach and Inlet Board, it sounds like one, perhaps on occasion, more than three of you have been there, or three have been there, um, that if you engage in a dialogue with them, then that is, uh, likely considered an official meeting. I would say it is.
Yeah, definitely.
And, um, because you are meaningful, transacting a public business. And so then you would be running afoul of the open meetings law. Um, so you, you should not all attend the Beach and Inlet Boards. If you want to attend the, if you want to participate in the tasks that you have assigned to that board, then you should undertake that as the Board of Commissioners.
I think David did an excellent job of explaining that.
Okay. All right, Ms. Patton.
Thank you.
I didn't know.
I'll be sure I'm quiet.
Should I dance?
But after, but after the agenda was asked to change and was challenged, so...
Right.
So it, so you, so there was some interaction which we should not have.
No, no question, but I would say the same thing. The same rule applies to every advisory board, and we don't, we don't sit in silence. We should.
Hey, as we're coming back in order, I would, uh, encourage all of you that, since you've been here so long, take advantage of all the food that's left in the table over here. Fruits, drinks, and cakes, and all kinds of goodies, so help yourself. And, uh, we're back in order. You got the battery, better for it?
Yes, sir, sorry.
You're operating. Okay, help me get going here. Are we on number eighteen? Or are we...
Yes, sir.
Eighteen. All right, that'd be you, Ms. Ferguson.
Good evening, everyone. Um, at the request of the Town Manager, the Parks and Rec Department began to, um, look at the item of races in general. It took a couple of months because they were looking at, should there be a total number that was allowed, when those should occur, because we were getting more requests was the reason this came about. Um, and in so doing, um, I got several different groups of homework that went back. And it was, it was, like I said, a couple of different months that they looked at it. But the idea was to try to bring the town more in line with what some of the other places, um, like Sunset Beach, Oak Island, and Ocean Isle specifically, where the for-profit races held. Um, whereas Turtle Patrol has been the agency that's the group that assists with the race on our island to provide volunteers. Different places have other folks that assist them. But what we were finding is that those people get their donation that they normally get, but the town also gets money back. And we were not getting money back as the town. So what the Rec Board proposed after looking at it is this motion that is before you, motion by Vice Chair Willis to charge a special event fee of fifteen hundred dollars in which the town has a discretion to waive the fee for nonprofits. And if the number of police officers exceeds five, an additional fee can be charged. Um, Member Tucker seconded that, and it was approved by the end of the vote. Um, if you guys decide that you want to move forward with this, it will be, um, we'll need to bring it back in December to include it in the, um, B's fee schedule. Um, and the next race where it would take effect would then be January because the September race was moved to January because of the hurt ban. For the for-profit companies.
Is that, is that fifteen hundred dollars? What other charges municipalities got?
Um, one charged seventeen hundred, one got a donation to their organization as well as a receipt and check based on number of participants that ranged from seven hundred to like two thousand dollars. And one was out car. So trash was one fee, police was one fee, and car was one fee. What we tried to do was look at, or, or what the board did, was to look at man and machine for police officers that were required for the day and work off of that. And the main thing you are targeting here is that for-profit race. We've had some nonprofits to inquire, for example, the Brunswick Arts Council has inquired about one in March. They would have to supply paperwork, but the main thing that you're targeting here is your for-profit company. They're writing on my, giving me anything back to the town. And I, I, I see you wanting to speak. I was going to say, I did make them aware when they moved their date in September and chose January, that it was currently before the Rec Board. It would be going to you guys once they made a decision, and so they could be seeing A D in January.
I guess that was my question.
Sorry, I forgot to include that part.
No, I said that, I guess that was my question, whether it was a nonprofit or a profit in January and what we want to waive the fee since it was canceled in the U.S.
And it is the for-profit.
I, I would actually suggest that, um, you said the town has a discretion to waive or reduce the fee as deemed appropriate, and you could put, for example, for nonprofits. But you leave yourself the, the leeway of waiving or reducing the fee if it's, if it's appropriate to reduce rather than totally waive.
What do you think of number five, police officers? Because it, normally with this two, right?
For Run H B, they try to put as many as they have here available.
No, but you're using, that's pretty high. You know, exceeds five. I mean, our normal mortal operation without the race or anything is just two, right?
See, but they bring in overtime people down that day to do that race.
No, I, I know, but we got to pay them, right?
Right.
So you're saying, um...
If they were to bring everybody in, that's just what they looked at. If they brought everybody, including the chief in for that race, if it got large enough, that's where the five would be paying them.
And if the number of police officers exceeds five, I would think it would exceed what we normally do. It would exceed two, then we would have a discretion to charge.
The calculations were based on them having four people there and, and their trucks.
So the fif- the fifteen hundred dollars...
Covers.
Has, has already factored in, having up to four police officers.
It has.
Yes.
Okay, how about sanitation, any other person?
It came, that came up to like eight hundred and something, I'm looking for the police. So...
So it's open, okay. The, the, the five?
Yes.
Okay. Who is, who would make the decision, who is the town?
The Town Manager.
Have, have you considered... I will, I, I think, I think I'd like for the, um, Parks and Rec to also look at other, other, uh, you know, festivals or whatever that we, um, spend a lot of money on and don't get reimbursements as well.
And I know, I, I think I need some more direction there, because I know you mentioned festivals this morning.
Yeah.
But we have that one seven thousand dollar line there to help with like trash and stuff, but when we don't get to see any of their, because they just hold it here, you know?
So they take this, they take from...
In the B part budget, there's a seven thousand dollar line to help cover Chris's trash needs. And I think this is correct, not my wrong, Chris, you used Steve Mercer's crew that normally does the beach to, to do that service.
I know, that's our money.
Right, but as far as, I think you also mentioned like revenues that we get back, and, and they take in everything for the festival vendors, like they don't have to turn over that information to us.
Is that a for-profit?
That's, the, the Holden Beach Merchants Association is the, the sponsoring. That's who puts the festival on.
Understood. So I'm, I'm just equating that to these, uh, people who put on these races, right? It's a for-profit organization, that's my question. And we're spending money, budget money, to, to support that.
I, I don't know what the, I don't know what their status is, if they're, they're for-profit or not.
To me, it's an equivalency, right? I mean, somebody's making money on this race, somebody's making money off that festival, that's my question. So if you can look into that. Um, and, and if somebody's making money for a race or festival or something else, and we're paying, and, you know, we're covering, we're paying tax dollars to support that, and they're making money, then it's, it's similar to what you're asking here.
I think that...
Am I wrong?
No, I think what you're saying is that, well, or what I hear you saying is that this special event fee needs to, so my...
Not be focused just on the racers.
I don't think it should just be focused on profit versus nonprofit. I think that you need to have an understanding of what the cost, the outlay is to the town for providing the services that allow these events to take place. Um, I, do you have a special event application that the town used where they have to outline how many trash cans, whether or not they're going to eat Port John's and all that sort of stuff?
They worked on creating a form, and they were going to have to list any additional services that they needed.
I mean, it should be predictable when somebody wants to come to the town to, to throw one of these events. You know, what the town's requirements are and what the cost would be. And, and we should make it easier for staff to plug in, well, you need four Port Johns, and therefore that's a cost of this amount. I mean, I would think that from an administrative standpoint, that I'll raise the mic to David.
Budget, from a budget standpoint.
Sure.
But I, I, I would, I would disagree on the profit for, okay, that's our decision, I think, for, for, uh, whether we want to do it for profit or nonprofit. I agree with the concept.
Yeah, and, and I think their intent actually was, if they, somebody wants to come and bring a circus, they would be included under the special event fee for profit and nonprofit. But, um, I, I think I see what you're saying, that you want additional services under, under...
Well, yeah, so, so, um, so it's a special event, it doesn't, it's not a...
Just a race.
Yeah, it's any special event, right?
So you might get a fee now for a race?
The Run H B people don't give the town any money back.
I think they give the Turtle Patrol a significant amount.
They give the Turtle Patrol, but the town or the officers we supply doesn't get any money back.
And the trash...
Turtle Patrol has probably more money than we have.
And the trash, I mean, it costs us money for these events. And if it's for profit and they're making money, that doesn't seem...
And we're all volunteering, so I, I would think we ought to look at, make sure we don't at least have to eat a lot of costs with no, with no rebate from them. don't at least have to eat a lot of costs with no, with no rebate from them. They will at least cover our costs. And if it's five or six officers, that's pretty significant on overtime, five of them on overtime.
Right, and they, they did, they looked at that, and that's where they got the $1,500 from.
And, and trash, and trash.
It, it, like I said, officers came to eat something. They figured if they went, Ocean Isle was 1,700, they figured if they came in under that, that it would cover the amount of time the police officers had had to spend evaluating the routes if they were changing those, you know, the trash services. And that maybe that it could also, I think the comment was some of the other sponsored events as far as races that aren't covered by this policy, that it could make up some of the difference, like the one that...
And, and your time.
Right, well, I'm not eligible, but...
No, you, you spent time, you spent, you spent resources, the town's resources to manage this.
Right now, we're not getting any things.
Well, that's volunteer, that is.
Right, right now, we're getting that much.
I know, I know, I agree with you. Okay, yes, thanks. So you're asking...
So do you want to, do you guys want to move forward with this based on the race so that next month something could come, so then January you recruit some of the money for the race and then look at brawling for something else? Or do you want it to come back once the rate board works towards other, evaluating other calls?
Can you simply write us that this is specific for races? And then that way it can be passed for races and then you can develop the others as they come.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I think the race could be a pilot.
That's what I mean by proceed, but just make it specific for races right now. And then you can do additional quickly, but that way it will be in place.
Why don't we just say events? I don't know why, that's what my point is, why are we saying just the race?
Well, because I think if I'm following you correctly, the $1,500 will take care of the race, but the festival has to be...
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
So, so I have this.
So you have to have a billing, right?
Different, different, right, different rate and so forth?
Yep, yep.
We have a race for January. Do we have any race in February scheduled, any race in March?
The Brunswick Arts Council is looking at the date of March, right?
So, so I would suggest, in fairness, no less, that we not, that we wait until we can get one that'll take care of both, the festivals and the race. And if the person in January gets a free ride, so be it because they would have got one but for the day with, for, for the storm, right? It's almost fair.
So you develop a menu, right? Races, festivals, you know, whatever.
I'd like to get something, a, a, a small bite, take a, a small bite off the apple before we go whole hall with trying to address the festivals. And I'd like to see y'all entertain a, a special event fee at the next board meeting so that we can address races specifically because the festivals is going to be another issue. You're going to have to, we're, we're going to have to address Holden Beach Merchants Association on that one.
Yep, yep.
Because that, that has a, a much broader perspective. And my fear is that Holden, Holden Beach is a good place to have these, these types that are being had. And I just felt like we were being inundated with beach race requests and I'm seeing the logistics table that goes along with supporting those types of things to, to something at least to offset those costs.
Yeah, okay.
So I move that the motion is adopted specifying races and with the change of waiving or reducing the fee as discussed earlier.
My second.
Having motion, second question to the clerk is, do you need verbiage explaining what that means when you refer to previously discussed?
I think I'm good on that and we're going to bring it back to you guys for approval next month anyways because of the fee schedule, so I think we should be good.
Any discussion? Any ready to move? All the players say aye?
Aye.
Players say no, and now clerk. Golf carts, Ms. Pat?
Okay, I had had an idea and of course I, I can't ask the town to act to look into anything that's not appropriate, so I wanted to bring it to the board. We all know that golf carts are getting more popular and there were several, I know there were several tickets that were issued last year where golf carts were delivering people to beach accesses and, and it looked like people parked there, so they parked there. Well, I was wondering if it would be valuable for the staff to look at side street parking opportunities where the side streets are close to beach accesses. And some of these are further down island. I know there's one down by 884 that there's a side street that has marsh on one side of the street and that's one of the places we direct people to go park. My idea was if the staff identified some of these side streets with parking near accesses, we could look into maybe having the front part of that side street specifically for a few golf carts to make it easy for people to drop the kids and all this stuff off, then not park right at the beach access and get a ticket, but they don't have to go all that far to park their golf cart. It, it would be an opportunity to sort of give the golf carts that are a growing population during the summer, someplace specific to go park where they're not competing with larger vehicles or not just looking for someplace to sort of drop them if they're legal.
Golf carts are considered your cars?
Yes, they are.
Right, so you're saying carve out a area for golf carts and not cars?
A very small, yes, to give them a preference at the front of some of the side streets near walkways. It's similar to what towns do sometimes for motorcycle parking, you carve out a special section for motorcycle. It's, it's just, it's a thought that I think should be discussed. We do have quite a few people, residents as well, living on back streets that use the golf carts and sort of giving them someplace that's just for them to park.
Okay, sure. So that's fair enough, so residents and visitors do rent and use golf carts, so you're, you're, okay.
But if the staff can't identify a large number of walkways that sort of have that side street opportunity, it really doesn't need to go anywhere. So I guess I'm asking if the board agrees that we can have the staff do...
Could mean to get in somebody's yard.
Let's just speak.
Yep.
Check it out. I mean, if, if you're going to do carts, then you, you, yeah, you can do cars and then cars too, so we should direct the cars and places like that as well.
Well, you can't, you can't vote, you can't, you can't park within so many feet of any intersection. So that's going to be, that's going to eliminate you like the first 100 feet in an intersection. And then you've got that rule that says that the homeowners can put anything up there now that if it meets that certain ordinance, it does away with it. So I don't know how you're going to designate a parking area on side street.
These, these are going to be the side streets that have the marsh on one side. We're talking about further down the island where we're directing people now that things like swordfish and things where after the first house, there's just a stretch then of right of way alongside the street that then goes into the marsh.
So we have, there's three of those, I believe? I think there's three of those. I'm not sure, not sure where they line up with the beach accesses. I think there's one or two of them that does, maybe the AO block.
We can take, we can take a look at that and see if it fits. We'd be delighted with that.
I want to say something, I hope myself serving, but every time the town makes a decision about allowing parking in different areas in residential neighborhood, it, it makes a tremendous impact on the property and its value. One ninety-four East this past weekend lost a $751,000 contract on that property behind the lot and building a new house on it because of the newly located parking lot next door. And I'm sure some other realtors in the area can verify this kind of thing, so please allow you to take into consideration the neighborhood whenever you locate these things. And these second road corner lots, as Mr. Evans pointed out, they're being impacted tremendously, third road lots behind the second road lots and all. And you've heard a lot of complaints from Lyons Paul and those kind of places where the homeowners can't get into their property. I don't know what the answer is, but it's a growing problem. And anyway. All right, number twenty-one. Mr. Hewitt.
Is that a vehicle replacement policy?
Yes, please.
We're proposing that the board consider a vehicle replacement policy so in order to better prepare for budgeting and replacement of our vehicles, the, the way we do it now is we kind of inventory every year and take a look and see which, which body on the truck is rusted out, that kind of thing. But as a baseline, what we're basically proposing is to start with making a decision or an adjudication on a vehicle that's 7,000 miles or seven years to consider it for replacement. And then once it's replaced, of course, the way that we've been doing it is that those vehicles, they either get recycled as in the case of the police department for a backup vehicle or spare, if you will, or they get recycled and disposed with the money plowed back into whichever fund that the vehicle was purchased from in the beginning.
Where did those numbers come from, the seven years?
We, we, we thought it up and basically here on the island, if the vehicle's over seven years old, it's probably starting to show heavy age. And the 70,000 miles was a, what is a Kentucky windage on a break point on being able to capture value back from the resale.
You also have part of that formula is idle hours.
Yeah.
Which is a multiple added to the mileage.
I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's at least covered 70,000 miles on it, it's probably 150. Now, that doesn't mean that, that that would, you know, be the deciding factor, but that's what we would work through our decision protocol in making any recommendation or inclusion, inclusion in a budget.
It's not an automatic trigger, basically.
It, it is a trigger to evaluate that, but it, it's not a gotta-do kind of thing.
Is this an issue the board should be dealing with or is that the town manager's role?
It's a budget officer guidance document on the vehicle replacement policy that I'm asking for to consider as part of your fiscal policies.
Does anyone want to do that, right?
Yeah.
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yes, sir.
All right, ready to move on? Mr. Hewitt, number twenty-two, town manager's report.
Yes, sir, I'm going to be brief tonight, talk about canal dredging. Looks like we're locked and loaded with the King Dredging Company, fully dred, fully mobilized on site, the dredge is in the canals, Scott's Lunt containment area is about ready to go. Our dredging operations in those canals. Our soft schedule has us beginning in Holden Beach Harbor for a period of almost seven, eight weeks, beginning the first of December through the end of January the 25th. Heritage Harbor is January 26th through February the 25th. And then of the final set of canals there is Harbor Acres, February 26th through April the 9th. There's different timelines on those because of course there's different volumes in there. If you haven't made arrangements for your dock and your boat, it's, it's almost too late, but you've still got some time to do that. Regarding our FEMA projects and storms, I have asked the Congressional Liaison here locally for help in breaking the logjam on our outstanding $350,000 of reimbursement that continues to be held up, I think, in Atlanta. And so we'll see how...
That's Matthew?
Yes, Matthew. Did I say Mike? I thought I had it for, yeah, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
Florence, we've had, I think that we're fortunate in that we have a program manager that actually has deployed here locally to Wilmington. We're holding weekly meetings with that program manager. The, the problem is, is that while we've taken care of the other smaller amount categories for damages during the storm, we don't have a beach technical advisor here that can write the project worksheet for our beach damages. So we are waiting for the federal beach tack to come down and, and actually write the project worksheet. So we have to have that done and then submitted before it can be approved and then take the, the next step. So it's going to be at least a couple more weeks before that beach tack can get down here to North Carolina and address all the North Carolina beaches. We're ahead of the game. I don't know how long that's going to take once they get here in order to write that project worksheet. We are ahead of the game because we, we've got a pretty good program. This book right here that, that the engineer has provided for, that's the document that they use in order to write that project worksheet. I think that the program manager's actual statement was that we're way ahead in terms of our program and our beach management plan, in a, plan in addition to the Florence responses. In fact, there was an indication that she would like to consider that our staff be included in the FEMA North Carolina working group as subject matter experts once the beach tack is, is on site in order to assist. We'll see how that works out. I want to make sure the whole beach is taken care of first before we start. Anything else? So our preliminary submitter, we've pretty much submitted everything we can upfront and we're waiting on the, the beach tack to come down and actually write the project worksheet. On Michael, we have submitted our estimated losses to the state for a possible federal declaration. I don't know if that's going to happen, but it's there. We've submitted it through Web E S C, county and all that to the state. I want to put a plug in that the next Coastal Resources Commission meeting is going to be held over Brickland and Plantation, the 27th, 28th, and 29th. I don't know what that agenda is. Normally they start at noonish on the first day and then finish noonish on the last day. But if you want to see how the sausage is made, that is the meeting to go to and see how the coastal resources rules are developed. You, you may have to go to three or four of them to get a handle on it, but the, the range of issues may go from how a variance is done on a CAMA, CAMA regulation or a CAMA project all the way over to how a CAMA rules are amended. So this is a good opportunity. Brickland and Plantation is about three miles as the crow flies from Pat's house at the west end of the island, so they're holding it.
When you evaluate?
No, November. Uh, no, November, November 27th, 28th, 29th, it's next week. This is the one that's canceled. And normally, they're held in Wilmington. Sometimes in the past, they've been held down at Sunset Beach, but since the, the Pink Palace down there is not, is, is closed, they've, they're, they've looking for another thing, they're going to hold it there. So that's, that's my report, y'all.
We're comfortable, folks, when you go, because it's a whole day.
Yeah.
Mayor's comments? Happy Thanksgiving to you all, glad you're here. And that concludes my report. Except that the number of check-ins for the whole week, Thanksgiving week, was the highest this year that's ever been in my kind of thing. So there's a continuation of a involvement in the vacation industry, whereas the whole family's coming to the beach more and more every year. So momma doesn't have to spend the time in the kitchen and everybody else having a big time. They're, they're coming and then they're having the food either brought in, catered, or whatever. It's, it's just a change that I'm seeing taking place. But anyway, Mike?
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would suggest if you have any input on the rollback issue and the waste issue, that you either email us or show up here next meeting when we're going to discuss it. Because I say the same thing all the time, it's, it's a lot easier to make a decision when you have everybody's input rather than very much make a decision and then tell us we, we got it wrong. I appreciate, I appreciate any input you have.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and for staying, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Sure.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and thanks for hanging in there. Appreciate it.
Tom? Repeat.
Safe Thanksgiving and a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next time.
We did that, right? We know, we did that a few. Okay, public comments? Anybody want to speak to anything about anything?
Oh, everybody, move. I got my first turkey this year. Of course, it scared a lot of people pretty bad when the gun went off of Walmart's frozen turkey. The reason I came up here is, is that I know that Jerry knows about it, and there's a few other people that may know about it, but annually, we hold a contractors informational meeting. And every year, we've held it for quite a few years, and every year, we have guest speakers. They come from the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, they talk about the FEMA stuff. But we spend a tremendous amount of time trying to educate the contractors on the island so that we can help make everybody safe. A lot of the staff gets involved, but Ava and Rhonda spend a tremendous amount of time on it, prepping it and getting it ready. And our staff, we get ready to educate them, and we do a lot of research to do that. We, I ask my partners throughout the state, people I've been familiar with and worked with for over 25 years ago, and every year, they come. And so, you know, I like to thank them for doing that, but most important, it's important that the town recognizes that the staff's involved in this, and it probably single-handedly saves contractors a lot of money. It saves the taxpayers a lot of money because it reduces our ability. If we didn't do this every year, we would probably have to have more people to do our job. But because it's a cooperation between contractors and, and the planning department, we, we reduce everybody's effort. And so I, I'm just here to thank my staff and the staff from the town that was involved and helped because everyone made it a success once again. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to point a clarification. Our beach board meeting was October 25th. That's the meeting that was in question that Pat had to objections to. But the amicus brief meeting wasn't until November 1st. So I don't think that was it. I haven't gone back and listened to the tape yet, but I don't think that was the issue, so I just want to clarify about that.
Anyone else want to speak about anything? I want to speak too. Not seeing anyone else. Is there a motion to return? Motion made in second office, there's the aye.